How's that ready to go?
I'm on my last one, sir. Yes, sir. Let's go.
That was fast.
It's good, buddy.
Yeah. I don't know.
Could have been a dog.
I've got a stamp. That's why you need one.
Steph, you good to go?
No.
Good to go? Good to go? All right. It's 6:01 and we're going to start just a little bit late. Sorry for that. I'm going to call to order the city council meeting for May 27th, 2025. Let's all stand for the invocation and pledge allegiance led by Councilmember Kent McKinney.
Please pray with me. Heavenly Father, thanks for my countless blessings, including the opportunity to live in this great city, state, and country. Thanks for our very generous citizens who support with their philanthropy so many fine organizations across our city and the country that provide so many good benefits for those in need. Thank you for the Memorial Day that we just celebrated. It's a reminder to be grateful every day for the sacrifices that were made for our freedom. Guide us tonight in our work here and in our budgeting process over the next few months. Also, guide those in Washington that have their hands full with debt, inflation, and our common defense. Bless first and smarters and our service members around the world for all that they do and sacrifices that they are making today. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This party out here, overall.
I feel very safe.
Let me just say I'm glad to have a full council chamber. Thank you all of you for being here tonight. Our last meeting was at the Arcadia, which is a lovely facility, except if you're onstage, you can neither see nor hear. It's great to be back in the clubhouse where we can see everybody and hear everybody. I think our first item on agenda is announcements of community interest.
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome to everybody. We do have a big group tonight, so it's good to see the chamber filled. I'm going to go through two events and then I believe I have two other short announcements. But it is summertime officially. I think the schools most have let out, so I think there's a couple that still have till the rest of this week. I know they're ready to get out too. But let's talk about what's going on at the library. The library's summer reading program will kick off with a sign-up party, and that'll be this Saturday, May 31st, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and it's at the library. They'll have quite a few activities out there. There'll be a food truck, music, some nature tours, a bounce house, and things like that. The summer reading program runs from May 31st to July 31st. We encourage every parent to bring their kids along. It's a fun event. There's a lot of activities all through the summer, and if you have any questions about it, you can find more information and the schedule there on the library. So you can call the reference desk or visit the city's website. I want to point out that all the programs this summer will be at the library. In the past, of course, we've had it at the Calo Theater, but currently undergoing renovations there. So all programs this summer will be at the library. Parks events, Community Day is not this Saturday, but next Saturday, June 7th. Free admission to Kerrville Shriner Park. We encourage everybody to come on out. There's going to be a lot of activities there as well. 8:00 a.m. at Bird Walk and Talk. 11:00 a.m. is free kayaking, canoeing, and paddle boarding. And then at noon, there'll be some local live music. And there'll also be a food truck there, so fun day in store. We encourage everyone to check it out. I think Rose is here. Anything you want to add?
It's free entry. They use entry all day.
Okay. Let's see. Also, the Kerrville 2050 Plan Update will be published on our website this week. Drew, did you want to add anything on that?
It'll be up this week for public view at the Kerrville2050.com.
And I believe we'll be talking about it at our next council meeting. So I encourage everybody to check that out. And then I believe Michael had an announcement.
Mayor and Council, thank you for taking the time tonight. I just wanted to briefly introduce and very happily introduce our new Parks and Recreation Director, Jay Brimwalt. Jay, you can stand up. So this has been a long time coming, and we are very excited to have Jay here. Him and his family rolled into town this weekend and hit the ground running on a council day, which is the way it ought to be for everybody as they join us. Just a little quick background on Jay. Jay comes to us from Cholo, Arizona, where he brings more than a decade of experience in community services as the director of that department there. Jay has helped develop parks, expand their trail systems, enhance their recreation facilities, and as well as expand their youth and adult sports programs. Jay tried to enlist me in a workout program this morning in our meeting, which I declined. But he is persistent, and I don't think that's going to last for very, very long.
It won't.
Jay is a Dallas native. He got his master's degree at Texas Tech University, so he had to add some more Red Raiders to our fold, which I'm very happy about. Jay got his master's at tech and a bachelor's degree in Spanish from Arizona State University, and he played a little bit of college basketball. As you can see, Jay is not...
Why basketball?
I have to look up to Jay, which I love. Between him and the chief, it's fun to look up to folks and staff. Lastly, outside of his work, Jay, he's a musician. He likes to spend his time outdoors with his wife Melissa and his three children, William, Reagan, and Hannah. And I just want to say personally, I'm very excited to have Jay here on the staff and look forward to all the things he has to bring.
Welcome. Say a few words.
Just a few words? That was a heck of an introduction, by the way. Appreciate that. And I've never had a boss that I could look eye to eye, so this is super exciting for me. I love tall people. I married a gal who's 6'1". She played volleyball collegiately. I have a 14-year-old girl who just cracked six feet.
Wow.
So she'll be playing in the TIVI volleyball program. Actually, so we've been here 54 hours. I got home and there were six U boxes in my driveway that I had kids and nephews and brothers-in-law unloading, and I put on a shirt and came here and said, "Thank you for having me." You filled me out from a little bit of sweaty labor, but there's plenty waiting for me. We're super excited to be here. We might have brought up the median height a little bit when we came into town, which we love that. I've got three little ones. I've got, we'll have a junior in high school, my son, the freshman, the six-footer, and I've got a little 10-year-old. And those two volleyball girls went to the TIVI volleyball camp today. So we're already trying to integrate ourselves into this fine community, and we're just really excited to be here. Had a great meeting with staff today, and it was, went a little long. Lots of ideas, again, lots of solutions coming from staff. You know, I don't want to say the job is going to be easy, but it's a lot easier than it would otherwise be without such a great staff. So you guys do a fantastic job in hiring. Just looking to add to the situation here that's already wonderful. So appreciate the invitation, Michael. And I didn't know you'd have a full crowd for me, though.
Just for you, man.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Jay.
Welcome.
Before we move on, I want to publicly say thank you to Rosa Ledesma, who has led the department on an interim basis, both with grace and skill. Thank you, Rosa. Jay, you may be a tall man, but you have a big act to follow. All right. Any other announcements?
Yes.
Go ahead, please.
Save the date. You may have seen some social media advertisements for our first-ever Water Street Festival downtown Kerrville, October 25th, from 10:00 to 4:00. Streets will be closed on water in Earl Garrett, so you can walk around safely. We have a kids' parade at 10:30, kids' activities throughout the day, and a lot of great vendors that'll be here. This is really a showcase for downtown Kerrville. So we'll be doing our best to help them pop out their business and have a really fun day. 10:25 from 10:00 to 4:00.
Perfect. Thank you.
I do. I would just like to thank everybody for yesterday. Thank y'all for coming out. Thank y'all for supporting Kerr County, Kerrville, and our wall. We added two new names this year, and I said it yesterday. Louis, you're here tonight. You and Bobby Templeton were instrumental in finding, unfortunately, finding two new names to add to our memorial wall as we celebrate. So thank y'all for everybody. It was our biggest one. We're anticipating over 400 people attended yesterday, and we're going to make it bigger next year. So thank y'all.
Great job, Jeff.
Great job, Jeff, really. And Dalton, thank you both of you.
Dalton was our keynote speaker and did phenomenal, so thank you.
Kent, do you have anything?
No, I'm good.
Everybody's good. All right, let's move on to presentations. And for this, Jeff usually keeps me in sequence. So we're going to start with a Kerrville Kindness Award, which I will be joined down front with Councilmember Seigerman and Paul Hawkins. Yes, Paul Hawkins.
Don't be nervous. They're a relatively normal crowd.
You know, years ago, we didn't have Kerrville Kindness Awards, and I think it's a wonderful thing, and I'm glad that Delane recognized your efforts to make our community better. Delane, tell us a story.
Well, I kept saying this gentleman picking up trash along 27, Highway 27, a long stretch of Highway 27. And finally, one day, on Riverside where he resides, I stopped and said, "You know, I see you a lot. Thank you very much for doing this." And he said, "Well, the doctor's orders were to get out and walk, so I thought, why not do something while I'm walking?" So he carries a white bucket and a nice extension picker-upper, and I've asked him, "You've done this now for 15 years, right?" And I said, "So what are some of the most interesting finds along the way?" Yeah. I mean, I clear this.
I found just not long ago in Flat Rock Park, I cleaned that up too. There's a great big shed antler off of some kind of exotic...
Wild beast or something.
...deal that was laying off down in the bushes down there. And I hadn't seen, I still haven't identified what it come off of yet. It's the most unusual thing. That was it.
That was it.
Oh, I found tools, parts of vehicles ruined all over the place, people's wallets, money...
And he says he's trying to...
A pellet rifle.
Get it back to the owners.
Pocket knives. All kinds of stuff just laying everywhere.
Well, we have a proclamation. Let me read it to you, and then I'll ask you for a few words, if that's okay.
Okay.
All right. This is from the City of Kerrville recognizes Paul Hawkins as the May 27th, 2025 Kerrville Kindness Award. Paul Hawkins has been a dedicated resident of Kerrville since 2001. Living along the scenic Guallope River on East Riverside Drive, for over 15 years, Paul has taken it upon himself to walk regularly from his home to Whataburger along Highway 27 before doubling back to Flat Rock Lake and the Ag Barn, all while picking up trash and debris along the way. His consistent efforts reflect a strong personal commitment to keeping the community clean and enjoyable for everyone. Throughout his walks, Paul has discovered a wide array of lost items, including tools, money, wallets, cell phones, even an large antler alongside the usual litter. His work goes beyond the environmental stewardship. Paul also lends a helping hand to fellow community members, sorry, to fellow community member Karen Guerrero by assisting with transporting items to and from Kerrville Pets Alive locations. Paul's ongoing volunteerism and civic pride serve as a quiet but powerful example of everyday service that makes a meaningful difference in the Kerrville community. And this has been signed by the Kerrville City Council.
Thank you, sir.
Do you have a few words?
I constantly give thanks to the good Lord that I am able to live in Kerrville, Texas. This is a good place to live. Don't have all the crime and bologna that goes on around the world, as you're seeing. And I'm very thankful to be here, and anything I can do to make it a better place, I'm all for it, sir. And thank you.
Let's get a picture. They're going to take a picture, Delane. They're going to take a picture. Hold up the thing, rather. All right. Next, we have the Citizens Academy. Everybody who participated in the Citizens Academy, please join me up front. There'll be a slide quiz on that history presentation. Line up beside me, and what we'll do is I will read one of them, and then we'll ask each of you, each of you, including you, to say something you got out of the program. Is that fair enough? Okay. State your name and what you learned from the program. What this says is a commendation for each of the members here, and it says, "Now, therefore resolved by the City Council of the City of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, that they each is recognized for outstanding service as a member of the City of Kerrville Citizens Academy, and on behalf of the citizens of Kerrville, as well as for ourselves individually, we wish to express our sincere appreciation for contributions to the city and community." So let's start with Vincent Brechner. Can you hear Vincent?
Vincent's the one that didn't like it.
Brenda DeVord? Charles Eichenberg? Brian Mitchell? Michael? Roger Palmer? Jack Charles Peterson? Dave Prentice? Perfect. Doris? Gregory White?
Sir.
Right here. And Paul Zolan, right here. Okay, what I would like to do, if it's okay, state your name and what you got out of the program.
I am Gregory White. Been in Kerrville for about four years and joined up to just learn more about citizens' government. The best thing I got out of the program is honestly just how tight the employees and the people serving this community are and the team they have built. It's very impressive to see just the camaraderie and the cohesiveness across every presentation we have.
From these guys?
Even Stewart. We got in trouble in the back of the bus by Stewart. That's my favorite story.
And I'm Brenda DeVord. I've been here since 2018. It was an amazing experience, and the thing I think I was most impressed with was how forward-thinking our city people are. And he's right that I've never seen a group that takes so much pride in what they do. I mean, they really love what they do, and they express that in their everyday work.
My name is Paul Zolan. My wife and I have been here since 1993. This is my second Citizens Police Academy. I'm a slow learner. Okay. I wanted to see the differences, the changes, this third iteration versus the first one, and they've been profound. They've added some incredible information, getting to the point. Quality governance does not just happen. It takes talent, it takes dedication, and it takes a love of community for the government to function properly and fulfill the needs of constituents. We have that in Kerrville. Don't take this for granted. I would implore you, avail yourself of the first opportunity to become involved, but more importantly, to become an ally in the Citizens Police Academy, I'm sorry, the Citizens Governance Academy. Police Academy works to find out what's happening and why it's happening in this community. It answers questions. It gets rid of some of the misinformation. Thank you.
I'm Roger Palmer. I've been here since July 2012, and I thank my pastor for getting me involved and knowing what the political arena is, not necessarily elected office, but knowing how the city operates. And with this Citizens Government Academy, it's very informative. There's a lot of information. There's more information that can be shared in 10 sessions in a three-hour evening. Just don't cover it all. And what I learned, the City of Kerrville is very well-run. There's very knowledgeable people in each department to run this city, and the people care, the people within the various departments care about the city. And Mrs. Julie Burns, she knows exactly what she's doing in the finances. And she runs a tight financial, she runs the finances very tight to make sure the city is run very properly. And so the City of Kerrville is in very good hands with very knowledgeable people. So I'm like Paul. I encourage you to participate in the next Citizens Government Academy to learn more, to know exactly how the city runs and not just sit back and be a whiner and a complainer, because you learn a lot, and your thoughts change when you take this class.
Brian Mitchell, I was a whiner and complainer.
I was expecting kind of an interesting meteor. I mean, some of these topics can be incredibly boring. Every one, I kind of said, "Oh, do I have to go?" And every one, they just blew me away. They put the 18 on this. It really did. So I don't put up with other people whining and complaining. You got that issue? They'll solve it. There's more to it than you think. This is clearly the 18, so thank you.
My name is Doris Prentice, and my husband and I did the academy together. We've been here since 2018, and I have to, these folks all pretty much said what I would say, but I have to say that one of the sessions, we actually got to sit back here and play city council people, and they have a tough job. Our little session wasn't that tough, and we had a hard time coming up with decisions and trying to make everybody happy, so you need to give them some grace when things are going on in the city. Amen.
Dave Prentice, I've been here the same length of time, I guess, and I might have missed a year there somewhere. But what he said, this guy here, whatever his name is...
Brian Mitchell.
The mayor. Whatever. Really was every Thursday night, have to show up here after working all day and like, "Oh, no, I got to go." And you get here, and it was very, very interesting. Really kept you going. It was really worth the time, and I really enjoyed the outings, when we got to go see how the water worked, city worked, and got to go to the police department, the fire department, all that stuff. So it was a great, it was a great class.
My name is Charles Eichenberg, and I've lived here for seven years, and we love this city. And going through this academy, it opens your eyes to what's going on in the city. And one of the ones that I remember was the budget thing. It seemed like we were in there forever. But these people, and their forecasting and their planning, they're so precise, and they work hard at it, and they're stingy with money, but they spend it where they need to. And if you look around Kerrville, it shows. So that was one of the things. But all the other departments, we got on a bus, we went to different places. The waterworks was very interesting to go through that and see how that works. So I'd encourage you, if you want to know more about Kerrville and how it works, a lot of the people that worked with us are right over there and over here, and they were excellent presenters and covered everything very well. So we're very grateful.
My name's Jack Peterson. I moved here because I have a familial connection to this town. I spent my professional career working around all the levels of government. I've never been around a governing body and staff more professional than here in Kerrville, Texas. I'm proud to live here.
I interrupted you a little. You want to finish? All right, so I have...
We decided we're going to run for mayor.
Let me just say this. Thank you for the commitment you each put into this. You get out of something what you put into it, and obviously you put into a lot. Charvy would be here tonight. Ms. Torque would be here tonight, but she doesn't feel well. She would wish each of you well, and in her absence, let's give Charvy a round. So hold up your certificates, and they're going to take a picture, I think, and they'll be released from class. Excellent work. Check that.
And for taking the class. Well, let's see. Where are we now? Oh, I know where we are, yeah.
That's your order? This is mine? That's where you're going to sit. Guys, I took place for... Just keep, sir. They were part of the riders yesterday.
All right. After that rowdy group, we have a more solemn proclamation tonight. And this is about motorcycle safety awareness. Anybody who is a motorcyclist or has an interest in this, please join me up front.
Oh, that was y'all.
It's all right. We're all one team, right?
You know, it's been a hard month for motorcycle safety. Our community had a terrible loss this month, and I almost feel like we're too late in asking people to be more careful. But every step helps, and so I think this proclamation is one more step. People be more aware of motorcycles and share the room. Let me read this proclamation. This is a proclamation of the City of Kerrville. Whereas motorcyclists are relatively unprotected and therefore more prone to injury or death in a crash than other vehicle drivers, and whereas all those who put themselves behind the wheel are responsible for being aware of motorcyclists and regarding them with the same respect as any other vehicle traveling our highways, and whereas it is the responsibility of riders and motorists alike to obey all traffic laws and safety rules. Whereas we encourage all Kerr County citizens to do their part to increase safety and awareness in our community, and for motorcycle riders to give each other the mutual respect they deserve. Now, therefore, I, Joe Herring, Jr., Mayor of the City of Kerrville, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month in Kerrville, Texas, and encourage all citizens to join me in observing this month and motorcycle safety everywhere. What I'd like to do, if it's okay, is go down the line, state your name, and any comments you'd like to make about motorcycle...
My little sister unfortunately was minutes after the accident, coming up on the chaotic scene of an accident and noticing a white speck in the distance resembling a motorcycle. Colton's bike was white. My sister calls my mother, who is home, to see if Colton's bike was home. It wasn't. My sister rapidly flips to Life 360. It was him. Less than a mile from home, Colton, 23-years-old, with so much life ahead, my little brother, lifeless on Texas Highway 46. The evening of March 18, 2024, at approximately 6:32 PM, an oncoming vehicle took a left turn into their driveway home, cutting in front of Colton, taking his life, taking away his opportunity to go home because they didn't see him. Since this day of losing my sweet little brother, who had so much life left to live, I have made a mission to spread awareness and to be an advocate for riders like my brother, just doing what they love, riding. Motorcyclists are people, loved ones. They deserve to make it home, too. I have with me talking points, which I left them out on the counter out there, to educate, to save lives, to share with anyone who may be interested. This was provided to me by Motorcycle Safety and Awareness TCOC and I, Region One, and I am going to share with you number four. Failure to yield the ride away while turning left. When turning left, always look forward further down the road, as motorcycles are smaller and, sorry, excuse me. Look further away. Over 30% of crashes occur this way. Look twice before turning left. This is just one factor that could save a life. The life you may be saving could be your child's favorite teacher, your neighbor, even your pastor. Bikers are in all professions. There's no excuse for, I didn't see the motorcycle. There's always speculation when it comes to bikers and them being reckless and/or carefree. Unfortunately, as realistic as it seems, this isn't the case. Colton had always protective gear, not speeding, and was just trying to get home. He was in no wrongdoing, and yet, his life was taken. According to Texas Department of Transportation, there were 9,016 motorcycle crashes in Texas in 2024. 585 of those motorcyclists died, Colton being a part of that statistic, and over 2,500 were seriously injured. The Hill Country is very well-known for its beautiful sceneries and routes. In 2020, three bikers who were retired law enforcement officers lost their lives here. Just recently, we experienced a big community impact with the loss of a family just out enjoying their day, but unfortunately, also losing their lives. Motorcycles are everywhere. Let's help do our part to keep them safe. May as nationally known as Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month. And how we could help do our part, advocate and spread awareness here locally with this proclamation. Thanks to everybody. Please, everyone do your part. Look twice, save a life. It's everyone's responsibility to be safe on the road. Thank you for your time and allowing me to be here. This proclamation means not only so much to me and my family, but to riders and their families across the Hill Country.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Michaela Lovins. I am the younger sister of our older sister, Colton. I'm just happy to be here.
Thank you. Ma'am?
I'm Norm McCordona Price. I work for textile. I'm a traffic safety specialist, and we do the campaign, look twice for motorcycles. We'd like to see more awareness coming out of the program, be longer for more the pretty weather. Once it starts in the summer, the fall, and the spring, there's, we should always be looking twice for motorcycles, not just for May.
My name is Jeremy Brensberger. Been here about, going on three years now, own a barber shop here in Kerrville. I'm also the Combat Vets Motorcycle Association Kerrville Detachment Commander. We're in the process of starting our own chapter right here in Kerrville. And what I would like to say is, kind of on what you just said, is that we, people in this state go on vacation and come here to ride their bikes. And so, they're always going to be here. And hopefully, our presence, being here a lot more often out in town, will help put their presence out there. Thank you.
My name is Marvin Puente. We also drive cars. And I can tell you from a driving, driving a truck perspective, that sometimes we see other cars and we don't really think about motorcycles. Because I ride a motorcycle, I do make the extra effort to look for a motorcycle. And if we could just all do that, I think that would help us a lot.
I'm Roger Mead. I've been riding motorcycles for 70 years. I've had two major accidents. One was a left turner. Seventy-eight-year-old man turned left in front of me. The second one was the wrong, wrong way on a one-way street, hit me head-on, an illegal alien, no insurance, no driver's license. She was drunk. So, the biggest things we have is people that don't pay attention to us. Guy that turned left in front of me said, I didn't see me. I'm got a 900-pound motorcycle with headlights that'll blind you, that are running all the time, and he didn't see me. That's the story most of us get with people that turn left in front of us. So, please, if you're making a left or you see a motorcycle coming at you, don't judge our speed. Because most people in a car cannot judge a motorcycle's speed properly. We are actually moving at the speed limit faster than you think we are. We're approaching you at the speed limit, or we're past you, and you pay for approaching. So, please, pay a little more attention.
Hi, my name is Sam Mead. We've been here for 11 years, and we moved to Kerrville because of motorcycle riding. My husband, like I said, has been in 70 years, I've been 50 years. Please be careful. We're out there. We love you, you love us.
I'm Dave Smith. I've been riding motorcycles almost as long as Roger. Had a few of those u-ohs. It was always somebody who didn't see me. But, we're always gonna have that problem. Add to it, we got an awful lot of people in this area that like to drink and drive, and that puts extra pressure on our friends in the police world. So, I'd ask all of you, if you got kids who are riding motorcycles, tell them to be the best defensive driver they've ever been. Anticipate, everybody's trying to hit you, and know where you're gonna go if it happens. Secondly, if you got somebody who likes to a little too much, remind them. We just had a family of three that we had to take to the graveyard. They were out for a nice ride. Didn't end that way. We don't want that in Kerrville. I'm a son of Texas. We've been doing this for a long time in Texas. It takes all of us to look at our own, to remind the younger ones, not quite so much, please. Thank you.
My name's Claude Norman. I've lived in the area off and on for over 20 years. This is the greatest place in the world to ride a motorcycle. The people here are wonderful. I'm a retired law enforcement officer, and I will tell you from my perspective, what scares us the most is somebody on their phone going down the road not paying attention. When you, when I get behind somebody and I see somebody doing this, it just, I want to get away from them. And I know things are important, but share with everybody you know. Driving, and I think the chief here would probably go along with it, driving, trying to be on the phone, texting, whatever you do, I don't even see people reading a book going down the road. It scares you to death when you're on a 900-pound bike and you have nothing around you, and they're in a 6,000-pound automobile. So, that's what scares me. And I'm always looking for the, for the one who wants just a little bit more out of their time. Thank you.
Christopher Dion. I live out in Bandera. Been out there since about 2017. Chaplain with the Combat Vets Motorcycle Association. Been in law enforcement since 2005. Worked emergency management in San Antonio. I'll say as much as, as cars need to be aware of us, if you have people in your family that ride bikes, they, they need to be aware of cars as well. And as always, dress, not, not for the ride, but for the slide. Because it's, it's not about, are you gonna have an accident? The longer you're on a bike, it's, when is it coming? We just had a wreck a couple of weeks ago on a ride we were doing from Comfort back to, back to a rally we were doing, and had a husband-and-wife team on a bike going a little bit faster than they should've. Hit a patch of gravel, locked it up, went high-side over, over the bike. The thing that saved their lives was the helmets they were wearing. We can tell a lot of stories like that where the helmets have saved lives. So, encourage your young people, anybody that you know, dress appropriately. Amen.
All right, let's get a picture. That's fine, as long as it's not proper.
No, no, it's not. It's just not awareness.
All right. This is from Texas Department of Transportation. They provided this to me for advocacy. Loveins, will you hold this while we take that picture, too? All right. It'll be right over here. See? Maybe they'll pop me out of some.
Thank you. God bless you.
Thank y'all for participating. I think I saw y'all on stage in up at Valero down by Stople on the way in, so, yeah. Well, thank y'all so much. It's, uh...
Thank you.
Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you.
Can't hear it enough.
Good work. I don't have a whole lot of time. I'll do what I can, but...
We'll be here involved with the city. Now, you're not the sister.
And you said a lot. You're right as boss.
Yeah. Press, this is the, we need action yesterday.
Should be the mayor pro-cell. All right. Community Council of South Central Texas, anybody here for a chat tonight? Community Council of South Central Texas? Please come up. Thank you for being here. All right, this is a proclamation of the city of Kerrville. Whereas the Community Council of South Central Texas was established as a community action agency on May 11, 1965. Whereas the Community Council of South Central Texas is celebrating 60 years of innovation, impact, and providing proven results for Texans in greater South Central and West Texas. And whereas community action is a robust state and local force connecting people to life-changing services and creating pathways to prosperity in 99% of all American counties. And whereas, community action builds and promotes economic stability as an essential aspect of enabling and enhancing stronger communities and stable homes. And whereas, community action insists on community participation and involvement, ensuring that all sectors of the community have a voice and will be heard. Now therefore, I, Joe Herring Jr., Mayor of the city of Kerrville, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as community action month in Kerrville. Thank you. What is your name, and then counsel a little bit about the community?
Yeah, so, my name is Vicky LaMilaire, and I have been living in Kerrville since 2009. And so, I started working for the Community Council of South Central Texas in 2011. So, I've been with this agency for almost over, I didn't do the math, somewhere between 13 and 14 years. So, what we do, we provide, we help individuals to become self-sufficient. And we do that by helping them with utilities, rental assistance, waterization, and any case management assistance that they might need to become self-sufficient. So, we have about 31 counties. Here in Kerr County, we have rental assistance and utility assistance, so help with the gas, with the water, with electricity. And then we have other counties where we have waterization and week, and we have veteran assistance to housing. And basically, we help them to become self-sufficient, whatever they do. And if we are not able to do it, we referral them to our partners with all, all their known agencies, agents, communities that help, you know, the community. So, that's basically what we do. I don't know, I did a press speech.
That's perfect. You do a lot. You do a lot to help people.
We try. You know, one of the things that I like, I've been working for this agency for almost 14 years. I love what I do. And I don't do it because I get paid. Granted, that's nice to get paid for what you do, but I do it because I feel good about doing my job and be able to help, you know, someone. When they call me and they say, well, thank you so much for paying my rent. I wouldn't have done it without you. It just feels so good, and that's why I do it.
Congratulations. Thank you. Let's get a picture. Thank you. Hey, my eyes open that time. Wait, that's it? Yeah?
It's a presentation document.
Our next item is item 2E, presentation about Arcadia Live. It's been our, our habit and policy lately to have those people who receive assistance from the city come and give us a report. And so, I, I'm very thankful that we have so many good organizations, and I'm, I'm looking forward to this report. Let's see. Would you like to start?
Sure thing. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jacob Bogish. I'm the Finance Compliance Coordinator for the city of Kerrville. And before we jump into the presentation by Arcadia, I just wanted to highlight and recap one thing, that this is a community service agreement, and it is funded by hotel occupancy tax and is in compliance with Chapter 351 of the Texas Tax Code. Stacy or Larry, do you want to take it over?
Larry, do y'all want a podium for your performance? I think we're good. No listens.
Just state your name, and set your name for the record, please.
I'm Larry Howard, President of the Board, 1501 Water Street.
All ready? Thank you.
We also have some other board members here. We have Kyle Bond, Scott Stumbo, Blake Smith.
Hey. Thank you.
Cool, so, I'm not gonna run through all the details. You guys have this. But a couple of numbers I want to point out is that we held 78 total events in one year, which is the most that we've ever held since opening. And then that number of $340,000 was musical talent and advertising at $20,000. We received $25,000 of hot funds. So, you can see, we used plenty of that. And then movie rights, $5,400. Oh, yeah. So, when we opened, about 0% of our concert attendees were out-of-towners, and last year, 24% traveled over 60 miles. I think the most important thing on this slide is that all of our community events were kind of a hub. So, a lot of locals attend these monthly events, and they all bring their families. And many of them say that their families stay in hotels. So, again, just promoting tourism downtown. They go to dinner before they come to trivia, or they bring dinner from their downtown neighbors. And here, Jacob had just asked for some accomplishments and future endeavors. So, I would say our biggest accomplishment was being included on tour announcements. And if you guys do not know, in the music industry, small venues typically are not included. So, for the first time last year, we were included on three different tours. So, that means when they announced their entire tour, we were on there. Wilder Blue, Robert Earl Keen, and Lau Love It. And then, the community partners that we work with is really large for us. KISD, SOC, Special Opportunity Center, Community Foundation, Hill Country Micro School, Art to Heart, Hill Country Charity Ball, Kerrville Pets Alive. So, all these community partners we work with to hold events and also drive tourism.
Heard that Granny's Bingo, it's not your Granny's Bingo, is...
Yeah, not your Granny's Bingo.
A hoot. And so, I'm going next time I can.
It's hard to get tickets. They, they are...
I know.
They are reserved within the first four days.
If you join as a member, you...
As a member, yeah, you get pre-sale.
Pre-sale, that's right.
Yeah.
Is that it?
That's it.
Any questions?
Yeah, do you have any questions?
No, I've just had the pleasure of working with Stacy on the festival, and she's such a hard worker, but she has a great team. And I mean, I am so thankful for what y'all are doing for downtown. Friday nights have never been the same. And I mean, I just keep them coming, and we'll keep coming.
Thanks, Delene. Sure.
Other questions or comments? Please, go ahead.
Again, Larry Howard, I just have to say that when this...
And then the community partners that we work with is really large for us. KISD, SOC, Special Opportunity Center, Community Foundation, Hill Country Micro School, Art to Heart, Hill Country Charity Ball, Kerrville Pets Alive. So all these community partners we work with to hold events and also drive tourism.
Heard that Granny's Bingo. It's not your Granny's Bingo, is it?
Yeah, not your Granny's Bingo.
A hoot. And so I'm going next time I can.
It's hard to get tickets. They, they are.
I know.
They are reserved within the first four days.
If you join as a member, you.
As a member, yeah, you get pre-sale.
Uh, pre-sales, that's right. Is that it?
That's it.
Any questions?
Yeah, do you have any questions?
No, I've just had the pleasure of working with Stacy on the festival, and she's such a hard worker, but she has a great team. And I mean, I, I am so thankful for what y'all are doing for downtown. Friday nights have never been the same. And I mean, I just keep them coming, and we'll keep coming.
Thanks, Delene. Sure.
Other questions or comments? Please, go ahead.
Again, Larry Howard, I just have to say that when this first started, some of y'all were around, the money the city has put into this organization has really impacted the community. I mean, this is, this is money well-spent. It is growing year over year, and I think that we're just starting to spread our wings. I think you'll see great things to come in '26 and '27 with our 250th anniversary of the country. It's also the 100th anniversary of Arcadia Theater, so we have some special things planned. So thank y'all very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
You know, I have an interest in history, and it was, Arcadia was built in 1926. But here's the thing, this group, this board, these leaders took a building that had been vacant for years, for decades. It was kind of a hole in our community, a dark, empty cavern of a place. And they've turned it into a living thing. And I want to say thank you for doing that for our downtown and for our community. Thank you very much. All right, now we get to the fun stuff. Those of you who have received certificates, you're not required to stay. You can leave if you want.
Except for Paul Zola.
Yeah.
All right. Shelley, do we have any visitors sign up to speak to us?
Yes, sir, we have four. Helen Hurd.
Ms. Hurd. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Helen Hurd. I'm a resident of Kerrville for 24 years now. My late husband and I chose to come here because of the beauty of the hill country and the golf courses. And so we've lived here happily. I am currently the Chair of the Kerr County Republican Party, although I'm here tonight representing myself as a citizen and as a taxpayer. It's been brought to my attention that a company called Go Banking Rates has published an article about the five most overpriced Texas retirement towns, of which Kerrville is one. And their statement, which I, if y'all indulge me, I will read. Retirees flock to Texas for warm weather and tax benefits, but some towns carry unsustainable premiums. Real estate experts identified five communities as overpriced markets in the state. Institutional buyers who inflate values through artificial competition target most of these retiree preferences. Experts, and they're talking now, real estate experts believe specific investors, infrastructure weaknesses, and environmental dangers push prices past what actual local market conditions show. The aging water systems and climate vulnerabilities increase the actual cost of living, especially since property taxes reach nearly 3% in this part of Texas. Specific to Kerrville, they say Friesen Nichols found that Kerrville needed 2,000 to 2,500 additional dwellings to meet demand. This was according to a San Antonio Express News report. Many of these communities weren't intended to manage fast population expansion, so supply hasn't kept up. The median home price in Kerrville rose from $224,000 in 2018 to $345,000 in 2023. That was according to the City of Kerrville Comprehensive Plan. Affordability remains a major challenge, and despite efforts to encourage development, the city's initiatives face opposition from residents worried about losing Kerrville's character. Additionally, environmental concerns such as water scarcity could impact future property values and sustainability in the town. I'm bringing this to your attention to ask you to consider the institutional buyers who are coming into our community, to pay attention to our aging water systems, and don't keep kicking the can down the road, and to find ways to lower the property tax rates. Thank you for your attention.
Kim Clarkson?
Ms. Clarkson.
Mayor, Council, Kim Clarkson.
What are you doing over there?
I'm right here, and I'm in the right place. 1228 Lower Street. All I came here to do was to thank you. And you deserve to hear that, and it's evidenced tonight by the outreach that you give to the community, the time that you allow each and every citizen to come and speak about things that are on their hearts, and the obvious care and concern and compassion that you have. And not only that, but spending the time to make decisions based on things that everybody in this room, including myself, does not know everything about. So when you make those decisions, know that people like me know that people like you care about us and are doing the very best for us and our community with the information and the resources you have. And you have great resources. You have amazing staff, as you've heard tonight. And at the Citizens Governance Academy, wow, the things that they said, and it just, it makes my heart happy. And I appreciate so much the effort, the sacrifice, and the time that you spend doing what's right for Kerrville.
Thank you, Kim.
And aside, thank you for all you do for our community, too.
Alfredo.
She, she was until recently the Chair of the EIC, so, and she served in the Kerrville City Council, and she's had numerous, numerous other positions in our community. Thank you, Kim, and thank you to your family, too. Yes, ma'am.
Alfredo Mamamani?
Alfredo still here? There he is. Good, good. Under the mic and, and give us your name and address, please.
Good evening to everyone. Thank you first for giving me the opportunity to express my little concerns, also some ideas. I'm an ex-Olympian. I know the city has a triathlon, but in my last five years I've been over here, I don't see the promotion from the city or the private business. And the reason I mention it is because we have small businesses, and we can benefit from these events. If you have, let's say, 300 athletes, marathon runners, this city is going to fill up. Hotels, restaurants, that's money for the city that I'm still making right now, because you all complain constantly you don't have money. But we have to work together. I participated in Munich and Biun, in Germany in 1972. That city was floating. There's a village. So I think if we can start funding the triathlon over here seriously, looking as a business that comes in, because it's not going to be just the city around there, they're going to come from the world, because they're going to come, super athletes, they're being Olympians. The problem is the money. We can't put a small money. We have to put money. So we have to ask the private businesses to pitch in, not the city. The private, because they're going to benefit, the hotels, the restaurants. And I know the time is short, but as one, one idea I have, I think we should create a mara, a marathon from the city. Maybe the city can come up with some people who's interested in promoting. I'm, I'm going for it. I own, I own the Hill Christian, the hotel, and also a few businesses over here in downtown that were rundown, and I was able to, to put them in business. So, but for the last thing is, I would like also bring, bring a musical entertainment. If we have a Sundays besides worship, and we don't have anything else, that, so maybe we can come up with some ideas. And then again, private business has to participate, and we need the guidance from, from you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jacqueline Murkey?
Jacqueline?
Howdy, y'all. I just wanted to follow up on what Mr. Mamamani said. I participated in the triathlon last year, and I enjoyed it. It's a good event. I would not be in favor of city or really any taxpayer money going into it. Private businesses, sure, that's a great idea. Kind of goes along with what I was going to say this evening in terms of my general philosophy on government, and I didn't come up with this. There's people much smarter than me that have. But there's the general LIFT principles. So you have life, individual liberty, free markets, and timeless truths. I like the little short, snappy acronym, LIFT, because it helps me remember it. But before voting on something, as any elected officials, federal, state, or local, we really need to consider, is the policy before us going to protect life, individual liberty, free markets, and timeless truths? That's why God created government, to protect those things. And in cities, you know, public safety and roads fall along those lines as well. Government doesn't exist for charity or for taking care of people. That's why God created the church and families. That's, that's the purpose of church and family, creating, taking care of people. Government should not be in the business of doling out public funds to really any cause, as worthy as it may be. Because when government tries to solve social problems, they usually end up creating more problems, whether they intend to or not. Instead, government should be in a very small box protecting those LIFT principles. Ideally, those core functions should be using as little taxpayer money as possible. The more of our money that we can keep in individuals' and families' pockets, the more prosperous our societies and our economies are. So I ask you to keep this in mind, as y'all are talking about city programs going into budget season, all of that, keep the LIFT principles in, in mind. Life, individual liberty, free market, timeless truths, core functions of government. And I, I know as a young person, I would really appreciate a lower tax burden, so let's leave it at that.
Anyone else?
Thank you. Citizen speakers.
All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. These items are considered routine and can be passed with one motion unless a member of council, staff, or member of the public asks that any item be removed from the consent agenda. Council? Who else? All right. We, before we vote on the consent agenda, we need to read in Ordinance Number 2025-12.
Ordinance Number 2025-12, second reading, an ordinance amending the city's fiscal year 2025 budget by reallocating funds from the city's fiscal year 2024 budget, transferring funds from the fiscal year 2024 Street Maintenance Fund to the Capital Projects Fund, accounting for previously received American Rescue Plan Act grant funds, and making other amendments as provided. This ordinance, 2025-12, was unanimously approved on first reading, May 13th, 2025.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes.
I would like to withhold the B, please.
4D.
Oh, no, wait, I'm sorry. I touched that. Yeah, B, 4B.
4B as in boy, or 4D as in David.
B, I can boy.
Thank you.
I want to put the chief to work.
I hear you. All right. Do we have a motion then for all the other items in the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve items 4A, 4C, 4D, 4E, 4F, 4G of the consent agenda.
They're second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. Pass it unanimously. That brings us to 4B as in boy. Chief.
4B is the Hazard Mitigation Plan, and this is a resolution that is adopting the current plan. A little history on that, so Texas Government Code and FEMA requires the city of Kerrville and Kerr County to adopt a hazard mitigation plan for grant funding and disaster relief based on the 16 different hazards. We are eligible for grants to include hazard mitigation grant programs, pre-disaster mitigation, severe repetition loss and flood mitigation assistance programs. And currently, we have a pending grant with FEMA for the generators at public works, fire stations, and some other facilities in the city. The Hazard Mitigation Plan is part of the adopted emergency operations plan and is renewed every five years. The plan currently before you was previously funded at a 75 to 25 split with FEMA. They since stopped that grant program. And so about a year ago last, in the beginning of 2024, we contracted with Grant Works and partnered with Kerr County under an interlocal agreement for participation in the Hazard Mitigation Act and Plan for a total of $55,000 for them to renew it and rewrite it, about $27,500 each. During that process over the last year, in March, May, and June, they had a local hazard mitigation planning team meetings that reviewed not just with the public, but also our local stakeholders over some of the hazards that we have in our community, capability assessment, ordinance requests, critical facilities, stakeholders list. One of the biggest, highest concerns that came out of those meetings were drought, flood, and wildfire. And since that, they had a, they've reviewed the plan, Grant Works, and they rewrote the plan that it, that y'all do have, which is about 260 pages. That really just is not necessarily per se an action that we're going to start this next week. It's an opportunity that if it comes in front of us for a grant, as did the generators, we have a plan in place that says we support this hazard mitigation program for our community, therefore, we are eligible to apply for those grants. And so before you now is that plan that they wrote, and the resolution adopts that plan that we can submit to FEMA to finalize that, and we will see it again in five years. We will review it again. It's a very arduous process. That isn't something we can take on internally to review. It is always contracted out through an organization or a vendor, Grant Works.
Thank you.
That's a note, that's a brief overview. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
I think that's great.
Go ahead, please.
No, I just think that that's great, and it's, it's an important thing that's going on, and it just deserved a little bit of a fleshing out, I think, and so appreciate you taking the time to do it.
Yes, sir.
The Hazard Mitigation Plan is not just a FEMA requirement. It's a blueprint to reduce risk, protect lives and property, and strengthen our community's resilience. The plan identifies flooding, wildfire, drought, and extreme weather as top hazards for Kerrville. And over 160 critical facilities in our community, including hospitals, schools, and utilities are potentially vulnerable. This plan is not just a requirement. It's actually a plan to help us protect the lives and properties of our, our, our community, our citizens.
It helps us take a good internal look of some of our hazards and our critical infrastructure that we need to protect during those disasters. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? If are none, entertain a motion on, on Resolution Number 112025.
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 11-2025, second.
It's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote, and pass it unanimously. Thank you, chief. I thought sure someone was going to pull the Xenon water plant strainers just, just for a science lesson. All right, we're into public hearings. Item 5A is an ordinance. Shelley, would you mind reading that in for us?
Yes, sir. Ordinance Number 2025-13, an ordinance amending Chapter 60 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Kerrville, Texas zoning code by changing the zoning of a property known as 3.29 West Main, consisting of part of Lot 17 and Lot 18, Block 17, 17 of the Westland Edition and within the city of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, from a single-family residential with accessory dwelling unit zoning District R1A to a residential transition zoning District RT and providing other matters relating to the subject. There are no citizen speaker signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Thank you for reminding me. You ready?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As Ms. McLaughlin mentioned, this is a zone change from R1A to RT at 329 West Main. Surrounding properties are zoned R1A, RT, and C1. Surrounding properties are zoned R1A, RT, and C1. This is part of the neighborhood residential zoning area for the comprehensive plan, which does support small amounts of local commercial such as RT. So this is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land use plan. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval on April 3 with unanimous vote. Be pleased to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
Any questions before the public hearing for Mr. Paxton? Hmm? No. All right. Go ahead and open the public hearing at 7:10. You don't have to sign up to speak to this item. You can come up and speak if you wish. All right, and I'll close the public hearing at 7:11. And ask for a motion then.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve Ordinance Number 2025-13 on first reading. This is not the first reading.
This is the first reading.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. And passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Paxton.
I'll do that, okay.
Mr. Paxton also has Item 6A, Resolution 122025.
This is a resolution for Habitat for Humanity, Kirk County, to waive their building permit fees. This has been done on multiple subdivisions for Habitat for Humanity with the approximate 41 homes that they're looking to construct. It'd be about a total of $110,000 in fees between permit fees and parkland fees. Be pleased to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Paxton? All right. We have representatives of Habitat here. Do you have any comments for us?
No, I mean, just to say thank you. I mean, for that partnership, we're able to pass those savings on to the homeowners directly. So it allows us to keep all 44 homes affordable.
Thank you. All right, any questions or comments? Mary Nana, go ahead, please.
Just have one comment. Just clarification, Mary. Y'all are the contractors on this project. No, so that's how you can keep your AMFI down and affordable for everybody?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Really, all 44 homes, and we also, all of them will have long-term affordability. So in the deed, it has to go to another income-qualified family.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, hearing now, entertain a motion on this resolution.
I'll move to approve Resolution Number 12-2025.
There's second.
Take it.
Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. I think, did Ms. Hurd leave? This is yet another example of the council trying to help lower housing prices. She left before she could see us actually take action. I'm not surprised. 6B. Why would we blank a river authority? Mr. Barron.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. First of all, I'd like to introduce our guests from GBRAs tonight. We have Daniel Large and Nathan Pence here to do a presentation for you. And as Nathan's making his way up here to do the presentation, I'll give you all a little bit of history and then Nathan will give a lot more detail on that. So over the last three to five years, four and a half years about, we've been working on a habitat conservation plan, which basically identifies there's two muscles in the Guadalupe River that are going to make the endangered species list, and they're actually named on there already. And so we've been working proactively with GBRAs to set up a plan that if we do disturb their habitat by building a road or any of our water operations, that there's things that we can do to mitigate that disturbance. And so we are here today. GBRAs is asking us to officially kind of enroll in that process. As you saw, the memorandum of agreement is not really spelled out, and the reason for that, the lack of detail there, is the plan hasn't gone to Fish and Wildlife yet, or the National Fish and Wildlife. We're still working through those details and we're still trying to get it to that end. You know, until we actually get their acceptance and how much they're going to have to spend annually and what we're going to be accepted to do by them, we won't be able to give you a really clear direction on what we're doing. But it has come to a point that GBRAs, it's time for us to officially kind of get on board with them to finish out the development of this plan. We've been working, like I said, the last probably three years on developing that plan. So I will turn it over to Nathan, and I will be right here to answer any questions you may have as well.
Thank you, Stuart. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Stuart. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council members. My name is Nathan Pence. I'm the executive manager of Environmental Science for the Guadalupe Blanco River Authority. And as Stuart mentioned, I'm joined by fellow staff member Daniel Large, who works in our Endangered Species Program at the Guadalupe Blanco River Authority. So under my direction at GBRAs, one of the programs is Endangered Species Regulation, Compliance, and Stewardship. It's a mouthful, but we take pride in it. I think most people probably inherently know that when the Endangered Species Act was passed back in the mid-'70s, that prohibited the killing of endangered species. I think most people can see the poster of someone with a shotgun shooting an endangered bird or something like that. We all know that that is illegal now under current law. But I think what's a little bit more nuanced is that when you look at the Endangered Species Act, it also prohibits other negative activities on endangered species that are something lesser of actual mortality or killing, if you will. Things like changing the ecosystem that they live in, impacting their food source, changing their breeding grounds where they migrate or they go to all the time. These things don't result in immediate death, but over the long term definitely impact the welfare or the status of the species overall. Clicker. So here in the Guadalupe River Basin, we're not immune to those issues. We have some rare and endangered species in the Guadalupe River. And at the Guadalupe Blanco River Authority, we have been through several rounds of lawsuits at times over endangered species and compliance with the Endangered Species Act. And knowing that we have these species in the river, the Guadalupe Blanco River Authority on our own decided to be proactive, use some of the tools that are in the Endangered Species Act, one of which is a habitat conservation plan that we're going to talk about tonight, to come into compliance with the Endangered Species Act without going through the court systems and without being sued by some environmental group. There is definitely a stewardship component to what we're doing, but then there is also a regulatory and development side to it where it can help institutions like City of Kerrville or Guadalupe Blanco River Authority do things in the right way that protects the environment but still allows our citizens or constituents to be able to move forward with plans that they may have or things that they may want to do. So at the Guadalupe Blanco River Authority, we made the decision that things like our diversions of water from the river, putting our treated wastewater back into the river, building dams, or having low-head water barriers, things like that, they most definitely do have impacts to endangered species that live in the waters. Even though we're doing those other activities legally with permits from like the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality or Army Corps of Engineers or some other group like that, we can still have impacts that are prohibited under the Endangered Species Act. And so we made the decision to go this route and work through the Endangered Species Act. What we're actually putting together is called a Habitat Conservation Plan. The plan identifies things that have negative impacts on species, and then it identifies the positive things that an entity would do to offset those impacts, i.e. mitigate for those activities, if you will. And that plan has to quantify those, both the impact and the benefit, has to quantify it through science, through modeling, through best available science, through knowns, through research, things of that nature. And so we decided to go down this road as GBRAs and work on it. When we got into the process with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, which is who administers the Endangered Species Act and regulation thereof and compliance, what we learned was there's a process where an entity that's trying to do this, like GBRAs, can also pass that protection to other entities that might want to partner with them under their umbrella and work on that with them. So GBRAs, we first met with our Board of Directors and some of our staff and mentioned this opportunity. And our board chairman, Dennis Patillo, who's from the Victoria area, was very quick to say, hey, this is something we can be a regional leader on. It's something that others may not have the resources or the knowledge about. They may not be doing something negative to endangered species because they want to or not doing the right things because they don't want to. They just may not have that knowledge. And so my board chairman essentially gave me the directive to make this opportunity to other entities to partner with us if they wanted to come into compliance with the Endangered Species Act. And my staff and I started a little bit of a roadshow going up and down the river basin, talking to other municipalities or other utilities, other users of the river, if you will, and started an education process really about what we were doing and why it was important. Stuart mentioned that we've been working together for a while. So probably about three years ago or so, we started this process of talking together. In 2022, I actually gave a presentation to the council at the time about some Endangered Species Act, and then Stuart followed that up with a resolution of support, essentially where y'all directed y'all's staff to work with this at some level, to explore the opportunities and see what that might look like. Through those conversations that we've had with Stuart and his staff, what we've identified is the city of Kerrville essentially has many of the same activities that the Guadalupe Blanco River Authority does that we need coverage for, we need protection for. City of Kerrville, y'all remove water from the river, treat it and serve it to y'all's citizens, just like the Guadalupe Blanco River Authority does. You operate wastewater treatment plants that put water back into the river that's of a different quality. I'm not saying it's horrible or bad water by any means. Wastewater is valuable. It does provide flow in the river, and it's a good thing. But it does have a different quality than the river water that's already there. And lastly, y'all have low-head dams and diversions, if you will, where y'all have intakes and you also have barriers that help pond that water so you can intake it. Those are the exact same activities that GBRAs has. And so it made sense for some partnership to take place. We are not in this to regulate the city of Kerrville. It is an opportunity. It's optional. No one is forcing it on you. We don't get anything extra regulatorily out of it as the Guadalupe Blanco River Authority. I do believe there's strength in numbers when we're working with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service on negotiations. So the more of us that are there, the better. I also do believe it's better for the river and the species in the river, the more of us that actually work on this together. What someone does upstream impacts someone downstream, and what someone does downstream can impact someone upstream. So there's a connection between all of us that use the river. I do want to make sure and mention, GBRAs and our conversations with Stuart, we're very upfront. We do not have regulatory authority over the river and activities on the river that take place in Kirk County. Our statutory district starts in Kendall County and works its way down. Our thought process was Kirk County is one of the most important places for the river. You have the Headwater Springs, you have the North Fork and the South Fork. It's very pristine up here. It's beautiful. Y'all know that better. I'm preaching to the choir, right? And it seemed like an environmental plan looking to protect species but also provide regulatory assurances and protections for entities would be remiss not to include parts of Kirk County and make that an opportunity. So I did go to UGRA, who has the jurisdiction in this area, and spoke with their general manager and let them know that I was interested. She actually helped introduce me to some folks and show me around and said, yes, that's a great opportunity. We have spoke to Kirk County as well and some of the private businesses up on the North Fork and South Fork that could potentially use the same protection. So we're not here trying to take over or anything like that. We're friends, we're companions, we're neighbors, and we've got some similar interests that seem to align on this. I'm not going to go through this slide for time reasons, but what I wanted to make sure and mention, I said that you have to quantify the impacts to the species, and you have to quantify the impacts of your benefit, your mitigation. And I just want to let the council know, we have spent two years working with Stuart and with consultants and with modelers to be able to do that. And there is a lot of spreadsheets and modeling and supercomputers behind it that have helped us do that. I'm more of the program guy out front. I don't run those models. I don't run those spreadsheets. But we have put a lot of time and effort into being able to do that and have shared that with staff. I already mentioned that the activities that can cause impacts are diverting water from the river or putting wastewater, treated water, back into the river. So the things that we have talked to city staff that could be potential mitigation items or those positive things could be essentially providing water for the species during drought. Right now is an excellent example of times when the river is dry. And there's a lot of ways to do that. Guaranteeing to put some effluent back in the river because the quantity of water is good. They need that water. You can reduce diversions at time. And then there's also ways to manipulate and refine utility operations that might could benefit the species during dry times. And then also making sure the water that goes back in is clean enough for the species that are there, and that's the 2 milligrams per liter ammonia limit that you see on there. And when I talk to city staff, their plants are run very, very well, for the most part already achieving this. It's not a huge lift. You get credit for it, and you're doing the right thing, so you can talk about it. So there's some good stuff going on already here in Kerrville. In addition to providing some mitigation for the species, as in water when they need it, or the right quality of water that they can exist in, there is a cost of running a program like this that's overhead administrative. There's monitoring for the species and monitoring of water quality that has to take place. And U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service almost always requires some level of research that goes with it. There are questions we do not know about the species. There's questions we don't know about the river, pardon me. And they like to see new knowledge coming in as part of the process. And so we'll have to do some research. We are still in negotiations with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. So I cannot tell anyone exactly what a program like this is going to cost until we get to that point where we're ready to sign on the dotted line with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. I have talked to city staff about how much I think it could cost, and I've talked to city staff about how that is apportioned. Those costs are apportioned amongst all the participants. Some participants are bigger, some have bigger impacts, some use water all the way up and down the river system. So the bigger participants need to carry the lion's share of that, and some of the smaller participants, which City of Kerrville would be one of the smaller ones, although very important at the headwaters for the species and for y'all's regulatory assurances, would pay less than the larger ones. So we've definitely talked about that, but I do want to make sure and say, even anything I've talked with city staff about, I can't guarantee any of that until we actually get all the way through the process with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. Definitely have good knowledge. I've done this before. There's precedents. So I feel like I'm given good ballparks, but until the end, you never know exactly what that's going to be. So we started working with Stuart and his staff about three years ago. We're now at the point where Stuart and his staff agree that some of y'all's activities could have impacts on the species. Regulatory compliance would be a good thing. And I think everybody can agree stewardship of our natural resource is a good thing, and it kind of all goes together. And so we've worked over this time to figure that out, and we're now at a point where we're going to really start writing the document and we're going to start negotiating with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. And to do that, we kind of need to know who's on board and who's not. So the item before you today is the execution of a memorandum of agreement that essentially says Kerrville, City of Kerrville, is going to continue working with the Guadalupe Blanco River Authority in negotiations with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to receive the permit that gives the legal compliance protection and regulatory compliance under the Endangered Species Act that would allow Kerrville to continue these activities unchallenged by anyone and with the right protections that y'all could use. The Certificate of Inclusion, which is the second bullet point up there, when we actually get our permit from U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, there would be one more round of agreement between the city and GBRAs where this MOA is kind of flexible. It doesn't have all the numbers in it yet. It doesn't give the exact commitments. That certificate of inclusion would come after those negotiations with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and would be very, very detailed and have all those exact numbers and exact dollar amounts and things in it. I do want to say that signing the MOA does not mean that you have to sign the Certificate of Inclusion, but it is a good signal that you intend to go the distance and that you have an interest in it. And unless something is really off in those negotiations or something new presents itself, that y'all's intent is there to cross the finish line, but you're not obligated. You're not signing that final contract until we actually get our permit. Just finishing up our timeline, we've been working on it for a while. We are right in the thick of it right now. We're writing the chapters. We're writing our actual habitat conservation plan. We have started sitting down at the table with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. We hope to be finished with that process early next year, and we hope to submit our application next year as well, which would bring us to sometime in 2027, probably. which would bring us to sometime in 2027 probably, when we'd actually receive our permit from U.S. Fish or early 2028. When you submit that application to the federal government, it's out of our hands or your hands, however you want to say that at that point, and they can issue it very quickly or they can sit on it for a little while, too. So we can't actually say when that would be issued, but I can say when we'd submit it, so. Mr. Mayor, Council, that's what I had for y'all tonight. I think along with Stuart, either one of us would be glad to answer any questions that y'all might have.
I have been on board with this partnership since 2022, when you first presented. But the questions that I'm going to get are, what is the cost estimate? And if I could get that, I'll need that when I explain to my constituents why we're doing this.
Sure, so what I am thinking it's probably going to cost is somewhere between a half to a million dollars for administration of this program. And by the apportionment that we have, by total amount of water entered to the programs and what Kerrville represents for that, y'all's carried portion would be somewhere between forty and fifty thousand dollars of that. I want to make sure and stress, that is an estimate. U.S. Fish could require something, I'm not seeing that could drive that cost up. But on the other flip side, if we can get together and we negotiate well together, we could try and drive that cost down as well, which would be our goal. But I'm very honest, I'm very upfront, I can't lock anything in and I can't promise something beyond.
I understand that.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
If I could simplify this for myself and for others, basically it's an insurance policy against not only lawsuits by environmental groups, but also fines and fees from the federal fish and wildlife. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, it is. And one more thing I would add to that, really simply, when you experience those lawsuits, it ends up in court and you never know which way it's going to go. And so it's a get out of jail free card a little bit, as long as you do the right things.
It's a get out of jail hopefully card. I remember when you came last time and I asked, why aren't you talking to the UGRA? You're a river authority, they're a river authority. And I think the answer you gave me in 2022 was, well, we operate a water system, right? We have a dam, we have a dam in our park, we have a dam at the water treatment facility. So we have an impact on water directly, we have an impact on the river directly that the UGRA really doesn't have.
That is correct.
They have the authority, but we actually have the plan, is that correct?
Yes, sir. And we've had those conversations with UGRA as well.
I remember, she was here that time, two years ago or three years ago. My concern is, I think everyone's concern is to emphasize, we are not signing a blank check here. This is a memorandum of understanding, memorandum of agreement, I think that's what it's called. And if you come back to us and it turns out the cost is more than we think we can afford, or the premium on the insurance policy is more than we think we can afford, we can still say no, correct? I don't anticipate us doing that because of the risks involved if we don't do it. But I want everybody to understand that we are not saying, here, here's a blank check, correct?
That is correct, sir.
I appreciate your work on this, and this is a problem handed to us by the federal government. And we are doing our best to mitigate that for our constituents. Any other comments or questions?
Several.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
No, I don't, I'm kind of concur with what Brenda said, I was just curious about this.
Well, I agree with everything that's been said and the number one thing that... So this is, I wasn't on council in 2022 when you were here, obviously, the last time. But I remember one thing I wrote down is costs, because you heard it sitting in here already. It's a federal program, who's going to monitor? Is U.S. Fish and Wildlife going to come out and do studies on the orbs and the fat muckets and everything else that's protected, or are we just doing this to say we're doing it?
No, so there is definitely compliance monitoring that takes place, and it's kind of done at two levels. The U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service will acquire an annual reporting from all of us as participants. So we'll have to prepare an annual document, and that will talk about all the activities that occurred that could have had impacts, and it'll quantify them. And then it'll also confirm both through documentation and photos the positive things that have been done for the species. And we would submit all of that to U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service as a group. Everything goes well, they take that document as compliance. But at some point during our permit term, they will read the document and then they will come out into the field or come visit with individuals to make sure what's in that document has actually been occurring. And then there's also stuff that goes further down where staff, like myself or your staff, will also go out into the field and make sure that the monitoring of species and water quality and some of the mitigation that we talked about that's more operational in nature, that those things are operating and occurring as they're supposed to per the plan as well. So there's several levels of it that occur, sir, but yes, it's not just one of those, trust me, we said, don't worry about it. There's, it's backed up.
Type thing? This is something they're putting together, are there any, you know, are there any funds from U.S. Fish and Wildlife? Or do we have to pay them to be in compliance with their rules?
I'm sorry, great question, sir. So the whole planning process to put the document together, the modeling that I have talked about, the work that we've been doing with Stuart for the last two or three years, all of that's carrying a price tag of it of about three and a half million dollars to do all of that, to write the document, to get it through the process. GBRA has applied for two Section Six Department of the Interior grants worth one million dollars each, and we were awarded both of those grants for a total of two million dollars from the federal government. My board chairman said that this is important enough that GBRA would pick up the remainder of that for the planning process. And so we have not asked for any funds of any kind from any entity until we actually receive our permit when we start implementing the actual conservation or restoration or mitigation actions that will take place. So we have gotten some federal money, and then there's also been some GBRA money, so.
And I'm sorry, the last question I'm going to ask you is, I'm a Victoria boy.
Okay.
So I know the river from here all the way down through everything. We don't allow combustion engines in our river. Nimitz Lake, you cannot have a combustion engine. But right up the road, you can run jet skis, you can run ski boats, you can run whatever you want to that comes here. Then I know growing up in Victoria, we could run whatever we wanted to on the river down there.
Sure, it's a bigger down there, too.
Is it looked at differently with what different cities have in place for their water protection and everything in our river?
Yes, sir, I'll talk mainly about our plan and the participants. But while City of Kerrville and us line up very, very closely, almost exactly with our activities, there are a couple of participants in the plan that don't have the exact same activities. And so they're looking at things a little bit different, asking for coverage for a little different type of activities. Recreation on the North and South Fork, not motorized like you're speaking of, sir. But recreation in general, there are some entities that are considering participating for those reasons. They do not serve customers with water, potable water, or operate wastewater treatment plants.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
No, who knows?
I have some questions, I guess.
Yes, sir.
So very much in favor of the whole concept, for sure. Some of the details I don't quite understand, I guess. So on Exhibit A, we have the table with the seven points.
Yes, sir.
And I really don't know how to judge how those affect us, how much change we have to deal with for each of those. I mean, what do we really, what kind of sacrifices are we making in those points?
So like Nathan said, we worked together to put this chart together, and partially on my fault for not getting back to them quick enough. The only one that I took exception to were items number one and number three. And those are the two that we have asked y'all not to execute this particular document for those two items. Those are the only two that have any little bit of concern for me. And since last Thursday was our last time we talked about it, we're already trying to work that language out where it'll be agreeable to both parties and then also look most favorably upon by U.S. Fish. So we can go over those, but I don't want to get lost in the details because we're still working through on what we think is going to be the most favorable outcome of that and also operationally something that we can do here at Kerrville.
So these seven points are subject to change?
Just those two, those two are the only two that I saw in there that I... And I'm not the only one that's reviewed this, but those are the two that I saw that I was like, those two give me a little pause. And I can talk about them if you'd like, or...
Those two are maybe the main concern. So ammonia level is not a problem for us to meet?
No, sir, I talked to Donovan, our wastewater operator, and he says typically we operate at a point two, or excuse me, a point two on normal operations, and sometimes it's as low as a zero point two. So we didn't feel, this is a limit that we are acceptable to, yes, sir.
So under number four, there's the language about in-stream flows below specified monthly thresholds, or what are the thresholds?
They're different on different permits, water permits that we have. And so the specified flows are... It's going to take a little while if you want to get down in there. We have four different water permits. Every one of them has a different threshold for when the water master starts to curtail us and when we think we can allow the water or when we're supposed to allow the water to go by. And so that's why it's a little bit vague like that. We don't want to nail it down to, hey, this is, this one rule is going to apply to all your permits because that's not the way the permits are written by the water master's office.
Well, so vague can be good and also bad, I guess. So the conservation plan is still in development, so we're not really knowing what we're agreeing to for that under, like, under number five.
Mr. Councilmember, just to provide a little more information there, when we first started working with Stuart, one of the questions that I asked him was, Stuart, tell me what the low-hanging fruit is. Tell me the good things that you're already doing that you think you can live with that wouldn't be that tough of a give. And these things on this list came from Stuart and his staff. Now, we still have to go to U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and convince them that this is enough and this deserves the permit issuance. So hence some of the statements that I keep making, because I want to be transparent and honest, that we haven't gone through that yet. So U.S. Fish could ask for something else that's not on this list, in which case we'd have to bring that to Stuart and we'd work together on that. But when Stuart told me this is what we could live with, this is what we could do, that became the list. And that's what we're going to go to U.S. Fish with first because we're in this together. We're not trying to get something out of y'all, you know? So when he said, hey, this is it, and I did the same thing with my boss at GBRA, let's think of the good things that we're already doing that benefit the species. We added a little bit more on top of ours because we have a lot more activities than y'all do. But that's where we started as well, and that's where we'll start with our negotiation with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. I do believe there's really good things there. I do believe Kerrville is going to help the species and help the water quality and quantity in the river if they do these things. So I wouldn't go to U.S. Fish if we just knew we were going to get laughed out of the room or whatever the right metaphor might be. But you have a solid package there, and we got to negotiate and get that permit, and we'll be in that together.
The one and three, we're not signing on to that.
Yes, sir, that's correct. And since while Nathan was talking, I did read number four a little bit more carefully. It talks specifically about ASR water. ASR water is a type of water that's dictated by the state through our surface water permits that we can use this water to store in our ASR system. If it's not noted on that water permit, we can't use it. If it's listed as municipal use or irrigation, that can't be stored in ASR. And so this comports with exactly how we're using that ASR water. It's just telling Texas Fish and Wildlife that if the ASR water is not available, we won't be storing it in ASR. It's redundant to what we do at the state.
Do you got anything?
I'm sorry, I got to come back. So does this go all the way from Kerr County, the headwaters of the Guadalupe, all the way down through Victoria, down to the coast where it don't... Do we, I guess I'm asking, are these endangered species all the way down the river? Are they just kind of local to Kerr County?
All the above, sir. So let me answer the first question, which is the Habitat Conservation Plan that we're putting together goes all the way from the upper ends of the North and South Fork all the way down to the San Antonio Bay on the coast. So covering everything in between. And we do have participants, other than GBRA and the City of Kerrville, there's a group of us that are all the way up and down the river, too. There's hotspots where you have more industry or more development and people, but nonetheless, all the way up and down the whole stretch. The picture that I showed had six endangered species on it. Two of those freshwater mussels are found in the North Fork and South Fork, and then all the way down through the main stem of the Gwadtillabout Comfort, where the river is known to go dry at times in that area. The other four that were on that screen, for lack of a better term, they're below Canyon Lake going all the way to the bay. So y'all don't have any conservation measures or mitigation that would help the Hooping Crane, as an example, because y'all don't have any impacts on the Hooping Crane, y'all are separated by Canyon Lake hydrologically. Other entities on the coast, as an example, they don't have conservation measures that would help the mussels that are only found up in this area. They're more focused on those coastal birds. So there is some nuances depending on which participant and where you're located and what your activities are.
So if every county from here to the bay got on board with this, it would probably mitigate that cost down for everybody? Is that a possibility? That's my biggest question. Would it be possible to get every county involved?
The answer to that is no, because not every county has activities that actually impact those species, depending on what they do and don't do in their daily operations. We started with a list of about 500 entities, narrowed that down to about 40 or 50 that had very similar activities that we thought might have impacts. And after we'd gone through the round of getting into serious discussions and modeling and things of that nature, we're left with around 13 of us, I think, that are still at the table. Most every entity that has seen that they have impacts understands the value of the regulatory assurances and then also wants to be good stewards, and so they're still at the table. We did go through the process with quite a few, and we came to the conclusion that their activities don't have impacts on the species, and that was part of the reason for the time that we've taken to make sure we get this right.
But the ones that do are on board?
Yes, sir.
Perfect, thank you, no more. I want to ask another one, Nathan, I'm sorry.
No, sir, that's what we're here for tonight, please.
Those are good questions, I...
Anything?
No, I'm just soaking it all in, this is my first round of this, so.
Mine, too.
I just want to make a motion, yes.
Please do.
I'd like to make a motion to approve our city manager to negotiate a memorandum of agreement with the Guadalupe Blanco River Authority participation in and complete the development of the Guadalupe River Habitat Conservation Plan.
Time. All of that was the motion on Glendale. We did have a motion, a worded motion at our places this evening.
Okay, then I'll amend mine.
Please do.
For the city manager to finalize and approve the memorandum of agreement with the Guadalupe Blanco River Authority for the Guadalupe River Habitat Conservation Plan upon verification of wording to account for the city's operations.
wording changes, yes, is that our second?
I remember that, yes, I'll second that.
Most have been maybe seconded, I know I'm confused, but I think we're on track. Any other discussion? All in favor, so vote, and it passes unanimously. Thank you for coming.
Yes.
Thank you for your work, I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Stuart, thank you for your work as well.
I heard some of the stuff the Citizens Academy said about your staff, and we would echo that. We've had a good work.
They're good, they're good folks, thank you.
Did you ever have a water trivia night? You're on my team.
I saw the Sizzler Granny's meat go, so I'm not sure where we're going to do it. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you, safe travels. All right, Item 6C, construction contract with Dow Tech Specialty Contractors, Mr. Burrow.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Before you, it's a construction contract for a lot of lift station rehab that's going to help the maintenance. And just to give a brief history of how we got to this point, in early 2023, you had authorized the execution of water sewer revenue bonds. And with that, Stuart had quite a few projects identified. So we took higher priority items, paired those together with similar scopes and tried to get that economy of scale that we present to you. In doing so, we had the airport lift station, which is separate from the airport commerce, so we'll get to that later. But this is the one right kind of by Al Mooney where Mooney used to dump into. And then the Broadway Lift Station. Give a brief history of what I know with Broadway. I actually did the rehab on Broadway back in 2014. So this is a continual maintenance item that we had. With these two, with the corrosive environments, we looked at different alternatives to the interior piping that is being replaced with these and looked into... and looked into corrosive environments. We went down to Rockport, uh, looked at what they have. It's not much more corrosive than wastewater and in-salt water. And, and so what they had actually done is implemented the use of HDPE in the, uh, in the wet wells. You know, get rid of the metal so we can, uh, get these things to be sustained a little bit longer. And, and so in doing that, we also looked at some of the causes of, of the, you know, corrosive gases. And we added the airport commerce lift station, which is on Highway 27, a little bit further down from airport, and looked at some aeration alternatives to, to help airport and then down to, to Legion Lift Station, to the plant, to get, uh, you know, get those gases controlled a little bit better. Uh, in doing so, we found this, it's called a Titus Twister. It's an aeration unit. And unfortunately, it does require a little bit of electrical upgrades at Airport's Commerce. And, and so this will be a sustained, you know, maintenance that hopefully I don't have to bring back to you anything, uh, in the next, you know, 10 years, like we did with Broadway. And keeping with the economy of scale, we also have a required maintenance on our end for the Comanche Trace Development. Uh, it, it is now 25 years in development, and we've got maintenance repairs that are gonna be needed for the pumps. So we added this to the scope, uh, since it was very similar. We got the bids back. We, we did a base bid of, of airport, airport commerce and Broadway lift stations with an alternate to do, uh, the Comanche Trace. If, if we could afford it, you know, we wanted to do that to, to help staff. We got three bids and very competitive. Dow Tech is somebody that, that we've worked with before. A very, you know, very good contractor, and we got really good bids in. So, uh, before you tonight is the, you know, authorization of the base bid and the two alternates. One alternate for Comanche lift station upgrades, and the second, just to do some site improvements at the airport lift station, so.
Broadway as well, or?
Yes, so Broadway is, is very simple. Uh, we did a real extensive rehab in 2014. This is just for the internal piping. We don't need any electrical or pump upgrades. This is just for the discharge piping.
Thank you. Broadway's at that memorial park, is it not?
Yes, sir.
Any questions for Mr. Burrow? I think, oh, Jaclyn left. I was gonna say this hits the lift thing with life. I'm sorry she left so early. Is there a motion then on this item?
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to finalize and execute a construction contract.
Second that.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, so vote. Thank you for not bringing pictures.
Thank you.
Item six D, Ms. Ledesma, professional service agreement with Spanish Oak Consultants.
And Mayor, we do have one citizen speaker signed up.
Thank you, ma'am.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. As I'm sure you guys are aware, the renovation project of the Scott Shrinor Golf Course is progressing well. This project is aimed at modernizing the course and improving amenities and infrastructure to better serve our community. To help guide the course to its next, uh, chapter, staff is recommending that we engage Mr. Mitch Harrell to, um, an experienced golf professional with a strong background in course development and operations. In this advisory role, Mr. Harrell will support program planning, develop marketing and revenue strategies, and work closely with staff to develop course maintenance plans and, um, best agronomy practices. We see this as a key step in ensuring the long-term success of the course. And luckily tonight, Mr. Harrell is with us, so I will open the ground, the floor up to any questions you may have for him or me and Mitch, if you wanna step up and say a few words.
Welcome. Please state your name and address for the record.
Mitch Harrell, 2011 South Spanish Oak Trail. Very nice to be here, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me. Questions I can answer.
I was gonna make a joke, which is inappropriate, so I won't do that. But I'm glad you're here. Thank you, and thank you for the recommendation. Any questions for either of us, or?
This would be for the overall management of the golf course, going day to day, month to month, I mean.
Yes, sir. What I would do is I would help the staff. Uh, uh, so let me give you a little bit of my background. I'm a PGA professional, a life member. Uh, been a PGA professional for about 40 years. Uh, have, have just recently retired from Trune Golf, which is the management company that's been helping out with the construction project at the golf course. Uh, I've been with Trune for 25 years, and my job with Trune has been to oversee golf projects. Uh, so we work with cities, we work with private owners of golf courses, we own our own golf courses. Or I shouldn't say we anymore, I'm not we. They owned, owned their own, own things. And I was a, uh, I, I was an operations manager that oversaw golf courses. So the general managers of the golf courses reported to me, and I helped them resource around the things that they needed to get done. Uh, and in, in my capacity with the city of Kerrville would be very similar. I would help, help the, uh, the director of golf, the superintendent, uh, work with the city staff on budgeting, uh, you know, help with pricing, help with sales and marketing, help with sourcing whatever talent we needed to improve the golf operations. Uh, and that, and that would include, you know, getting more tournament business. That would include junior golf programs. That would include the possibility of, of, uh, you know, instituting a first tee project here, which is a, you know, a junior golf, uh, program. All those kinda things.
All right, so this is a full-time job that you're gonna be taking to run this, but, okay, I'm not, I wasn't sure, um, what this all entailed, and maybe that's my fault.
He just got here and decided he didn't wanna leave.
So for a little bit of clarification, Mitch will serve as a consultant, um, providing, uh, recommendations, advice, being a mentor to staff, um, and helping, um, as we finish the project and look forward to the first year of being newly renovated, renovated and reopened.
So this is a long-term thing? I mean, this is a...
The contract is good for a year. There's options to look at renewing, um, after the term is concluded. But for right now, Mitch is stuck with us, um, for just 12 months.
Mr. Harrell, you're aware that three of our members are serious golfers.
I am.
Brenda and I are, have not been infected with a bug yet, been, been by the bug yet.
Do you play golf?
I do.
Can I, just to, to clarify for Councilman McKinney, our, our whole plan in this endeavor is to work Mitch back into retirement. We've just spent three and a half million dollars on this process. And so to ensure that we have, uh, you know, a thorough transition to the future of this space, what we've asked him to do is to step in and kinda help guide us through that first year.
Yeah, so it's more of a transition thing?
Yes, sir. Our hope is to institute this where we'll have a PGA teaching professional come on board in a more full-time capacity, and we kick Mitch to the curb and let him go actually enjoy being retired. Um, but given that timing of the transition where, you know, he said he was done with sort of full-time work, the, the fact that we have this amount of experience living in Kerrville, uh, offered us that opportunity to, to enlist his services. But it's not a full-time thi, it's not a full-time thing, it's not a permanent thing. This is a professional service to help guide us through that transition.
Okay, well, I mean, we are lucky to have you. That's fine. We're just trying to, you know, where, where's this going, and so it, that helps, okay.
Thank you. Any other questions for any of the three?
I do. It's not a question, it's more of a comment. Mitch, thank you for your leadership and your guidance through the process that we're going through over here. Uh, I was excited when Mr. Horner talked to me about you coming on as like a pro emeritus. Uh, I know the value of the seal, the logo that you carry as a life member that, uh, will only help drive business and get tournaments here with the PGA logo. Uh, the other thing that I'm looking forward to as well is your knowledge and experience in agronomy and being able to go over and help our agronomy staff and, um, you know, say, hey, this is looking right. Let's get somebody else in here that can take care of it. So thank you for that. And so, and I know the improvements. If you haven't seen the improvements and you're not a golfer, go look at the new grass, because it's like, oh, wow, there's grass out here now. So you can see it if you drug up golf.
I think we got nine greens spread today, so.
Nine in one day. That is awesome.
Should get the rest Friday, hopefully.
I'd like, I'd like a tour eventually.
I need to come back out, too.
All right, so is there any other questions or comments? All right.
We have a citizen speaker, so.
Oh, you're right. Thank you, I forgot. Thank you, ma'am. Who's our citizen speaker?
Larry Howard.
Mr. Howard.
Larry Howard, 503 Oakland Hills Lane. Uh, concur with everything that has been said about Mitch. He's the individual to do this job. No doubt about that. I did have a conversation with Mr. Horner earlier. I don't want y'all to forget about the long-term PGA professional that we've had at our course for a number of years. And a PGA professional, as Mitch can vouch for, he's the heartbeat of that course. And I don't want us to get too far down the line thinking we can subcontract this out. We need a full-time PGA staff member at Scott Shrinor Golf Course. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I agree.
We do, it's, and.
It's an investment, and we, we need to go the whole way.
That, that logo means a lot on a scorecard. It does. And we, we really haven't had one since, um, McDonough left. I don't believe, I think that was the last PGA professional we had, so.
I'm trying to follow along as a non-golfer.
As a former golf professional, too.
I have hit, I have hit balls into the water, of course. All right, is there a motion yet on this?
I would, uh, make the motion to approve the professional services agreement between the city and Mitch Harrell.
Spanish Oaks Consultants.
Yes, yes, excuse me. Spanish Oaks Consultants.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor, so vote. It passes unanimously. Thank you. Item six E, I'm gonna ask, uh, Councilmember Seigerman to take the lead on this, and we'll see where we go.
And we do have five citizen speakers signed up.
Well, we'll start with Ms. Seigerman and we'll.
So this is on the agenda because we're doing our job. The Main Street Advisory Board is supposed to do just that. It's supposed to observe, take notes, um, learn from other cities what they do, and then bring those, the advice that they wanna give to city council to them to make appropriate decisions. So our board, uh, at our last board meeting unanimously voted to bring this subject matter to council, which is to hire a full-time Main Street manager, which is one of the requirements to stay in the Texas Main Street program, which, if you've read the attachments, which was a little overkill maybe at 15 pages, but it's the history of our Main Street program, it's the benefits we've had through being that Main Street city, and what we can still gain and benefit from by being one. Um, you know, it's gonna take some working out, I think, but I think the merits of why we need it is what we're here today to talk about. And we do have some of our board here tonight, as well as a past Main Street manager, director, uh, who wanna speak. So I won't take any, up any more time.
Thank you. Who's our first speaker, Shelley?
Howard Taylor.
And I believe you're the chair of our.
I am the chair, yes, thank you. I've just been in Kerrville briefly. I don't know how I ended up chair already, but here we are.
You miss a meeting, they vote you.
I think that's what happened, uh, but I'm delighted. It's a tremendous group, and I just wanna reinforce what Delane was saying. We are city council appointed, and I look upon our job in many ways as being the eyes and ears of city council. Obviously, the complexity of running any community is overwhelming, and so the task that I have, or that we have as a group is to work for you. And, uh, I think you recognize, we recognize, that our downtown is a precious asset of this community, and it does face some challenges. We discovered recently, we've been a member of the official Texas Main Street program since 1994. Uh, but we discovered recently we're on probation. And the reason is that we don't currently have a full-time paid Main Street manager, which we had for most of our history. So we deliberated extensively about this. We looked at some other options, but in the end, we wanted to recommend that we return to having a full-time paid Main Street manager. We recognize their implications, but we wanna share with you our rationale. And so we have a number of speakers, and I believe the first one up is Larry Howard, who I had not met until this evening, but I'm beginning to know the guy, 'cause he's been up here three times out of any event. Thank you.
Must be somebody.
Just, just a second, Larry. I'm gonna ask who's the next signed up. Is it Larry?
Larry Howard.
All right. I'll be the one calling people to speak.
Hello, Mayor and Council. How are y'all tonight?
Your name and address, I can't.
Larry Howard, 503 Oakland Hills.
Thank you.
Uh, so 1994 was, uh, when the Main Street office started here. And I remember a good friend of mine remodeled the office across the street that the Arcadia now occupies as our box office. Uh, I've seen a lot of things that have happened with Main Street, and I didn't realize them until Delane sent me the attachment of all the different things that I'd forgotten about over the last number of years that Main Street has performed. Uh, I remember Mindy Wendley, when she was there, and all the good works there were going, when they unveiled the Mother's Love, James Avery. All the things that have happened, happened because Main Street was doing its job, and, uh, Main Street was funded by the city. It wasn't out raising money every month like most nonprofits or other civic organizations have to do. And the, the most profound thing I read in the, all the stuff that comes from this Texas Historical Mission, on the first page it says, caution, if an organization spends the bulk of its time raising money just to support operations, it's the runs of risk of not being able to focus energies on, uh, achieving its revitalization efforts. Main Street is one of those that you five get to decide on how it's gonna be funded. You get to instruct staff, do we wanna have this or not? But it comes from y'all. It doesn't come from us sitting out here. It doesn't come from staff. Budget time is coming up. Uh, there's hot funds, there's TERS funds, there's EIC funds, there's other funding mechanisms. Y'all have to figure out how do we wanna fund this, because it's a vital part of our downtown organization. I support it 100%. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Diane Green.
Ms. Green. As she comes up to the podium, I sure am proud of your family and, and the work Kim has done for our community.
My name is Diane Green. My address is 412 High Ridge Drive. Uh, Mayor, City Council, thank you so much for, um, allowing me to speak about a program that is, um, near and dear to my heart. I feel that the Main Street program, being part of the Texas Downtown Association, have played an integral part in restoring and, and maintaining older historical, uh, buildings all over the state of Texas. For example, in 2004, Bob and I planned to purchase the Beddick Field home on Earl Garrett Street to move our offices there, and we needed some information and guidance. Through Mindy Wendley and the Main Street program, we had representatives from the Texas Historical Commission visit from Austin and give us some recommendations. For instance, we found out that this home was, quote, "neoclassical style, an electric and eclectic mixture of colonial revival and classical revival architecture, which was popular throughout the United States during the first half of the century." That's really interesting, right? But really, what really helped us more than that was their recommendations about colors, about the woodwork, about the wallpaper, about the molding, uh, crown molding, uh, suggestions that we really listened to. Uh, we had, uh, wavy, some old glass, uh, windows, and it was that wavy, you know, and you look out and it's, you know, and they're, they're really old. Well, they were real, uh, instrumental in, um, uh, letting us keep that, getting the city to approve us keeping that glass because of the character of the house. And so we, so we, so many ways they helped us with their recommendations, um, with their, with their knowledge about, you know, if you take out those windows, the character of the house won't be the same. And that house was built in 1924, and so to move a, a house to a, um, um, to a business was, uh, was, took a lot. Uh, so we really, uh, and so in October, uh, also Mindy, um, recommended us, uh, for, uh, a restoration award, uh, with the state of Texas, which we were, thankfully, we were very excited about. We, we got the, uh, the best adaptive reuse of a, of a best physical improvement category in 2005, and that's because Mindy, uh, recommended us. We got, we got that award for the state of Texas. I feel like this program is such an important and vital part, uh, for small communities and all over Texas. We are very thankful for the guidance that we received through the Main Street program, and we hope that many, many more people and businesses in Kerrville will be assisted with this program.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank y'all and thank y'all for what you do. Y'all are amazing and I just love to see you sitting there. I love you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mindy Wendely?
Who?
Who?
Before Mindy comes up, she and I served on council together a few lifetimes ago and she was the first Main Street program director for the city of Kerrville.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Mindy Wendely. I live at 382 Inglewood Drive. Mr. Mayor, members of council. I am here as my capacity as the first Main Street manager slash director. The Main Street Advisory Board has been doing their due diligence for weeks and months and years, if you will. They can only do so much, though, because they're advisory. You appoint them to advise you. Back in 1994, Mayor Herring, well, remember this, as do Dr. Rector and Mrs. Rector and Larry Howard, our Water Street was torn up with an ICET grant. So, we're probably the only ones that remember that term.
Yes. Intermodal Service Transportation Efficiency Act.
Very good. Very, very good. The city of Kerrville was awarded a million dollars in 1993. That was a lot of money. It still is a lot of money to many of us. And so, it was a priming for the application by citizens, much like your advisory committee now, to put an application with the state of Texas. We were awarded, we, the city of Kerrville, was awarded Main Street City to start in January of 1995. You saw many of the recollections that I could remember on your agenda bill, agenda packet. Those are some of the things that I remember we worked on so diligently. We worked within the four-point approach as Main Street, as our pillars, we call them pillars now, organization where we met with folks that could carry on if there was no more Mindy or no more Mayor Herring or fill in the blank. We worked with nonprofits, not the least of which the Downtown Association, the Convention and Investors Bureau, the Chamber of Commerce and, you know, and so forth. At any given time, we had over 300 volunteers. So, what that tells you is that 300 people had an investment in downtown Kerrville. Because when a downtown is healthy, your whole city is healthy. Started off with 32 blocks. We expanded it to 37 blocks. We have national recognition. Then, a month after 9/11, one month after 9/11, Chief Holloway and I were on a plane to Providence, Rhode Island to sing the praises at the National Trust for Historic Preservation about our post office turning into Kerr Arts and Cultural Center in rapid-paced time. Government, y'all are government. You know how slow government works. Not us, of course, but on the federal level. So, we worked in, we worked in all kinds of different genres. National, excuse me, Texas film-friendly city. Tried to gather in some economic impacts for filming cities here. And we have had films here. We worked with, we worked with other cities. By when I would go speak and train other Main Street cities, where did they go? Oh, that's Mindy from Kerrville. They didn't know my last name. They knew Mindy Kerrville. And they would call us, they would use us as a sounding board and a, how did you do this? And how can you do, how can you do that and so forth? I will say that it's like anything else in our society. This is a self-help program. You will only get out of the program of what you put into it. By having a full-time person, it helps achieve all these goals that you want to achieve and then some. Larry Howard and I share the same birthday. We also share the passion for downtown Kerrville, as does Dr. Rector and Mrs. Rector and many, many, many others that are still in the place in their heart about how wonderful this downtown is. I leave you with your...
Don't worry about that.
I leave you with, it's your decision. I hope that you will learn and accept some of the passion that those of us who are getting to speak tonight can share with you. You're the decision-makers. We appreciate what you're doing and we hope you have well discernment in your decision. Thank you.
Thank you for all your help, Mindy, with your dates and everything.
Next.
Dr. Rector.
Dr. William Rector. Dr. William Rector in another lifetime, served with me on the Kerrville City Council.
Bill Rector, 705 Water Street. Honorable Mayor and Council, thank you for hearing our report. We are here tonight to reestablish, to ask you to reestablish what Mayor Herring started in 1994. We have been working for the last three months on a recommendation to you and I'm allowed tonight as vice chairman to bring that recommendation to you. First of all, we ask that we have a full-time dedicated Main Street manager to work on our downtown revitalization. Secondly, we ask that you consider a budget that not only includes a salary for this individual, but also gives us money for training, for travel for that person, that Main Street manager, and also allows us to hold at least four events per year in downtown. When we talk to other Main Street cities, they tell us the most important thing you can do is hold events in your downtown. And our budget will allow, a budget will allow us to do that. The next thing we would like to recommend to you is a job description that we have been working on talking with other Main Street cities. We have taken that job description from other places and we've customized it to Kerrville. It asks that the Main Street manager, if they can't live in Kerrville, at least live within Kerr County. Third, or fourth, I'm sorry, we ask that you adopt the recommended downtown core proposed by Freezin Nichols in the latest proposed downtown 2050 plan. That changes our downtown core, our Main Street area, from 37 blocks down to 16. We ask that because, and Freezin Nichols recommended that because it is strollable from our parking garage. You can park in the parking garage and you can walk comfortably to every of those 16 blocks within that area. We also ask that the city manager have an office downtown, but not in City Hall. We would like to have that office have an open-door policy where a businessperson can drop in, spend three minutes consulting with the Main Street manager and then get back to their business quickly. We feel like that that's important. Lastly, I'd like to remind you that the National Main Street Program has statistics that show that $1 invested in downtown revitalization results in an economic impact of $18. Look at the budget that we are proposing to you. That would result in over $3 million economic impact to Kerrville. I'd like now for people who are here in favor of the Main Street program, who have businesses downtown, if you please raise your hand, let the council know you're here tonight. That concludes our recommendations and we thank you very much as your Main Street Advisory Board.
Before we go on, many years ago, my mayor, Pro Tem, and I got in my beat-up old white truck and drove to Georgetown, Texas. It was a Main Street city. For those of you who don't know, Main Street is a part of the Texas, is a program of the Texas Historical Commission. We had heard about this program and we got in my beat-up truck and drove to Georgetown and we walked around the square. It was full of people who were shopping and buying things. We went inside and talked to shop owners. Well, what do you think about this Main Street program? They loved it. So, we came back and said, this probably is a good idea. For those who don't remember, in 1992 to 1994, almost every bank, well, every bank in Kerrville failed except one. Property values went down four years in a row, which meant there was less property tax for the city. Mindy referred to, Ms. Wendely referred to a hole that formed in Water Street when a water, a water main that was made of wood collapsed. Part of what is now Francisco's Restaurant, the old Weston building, had a facade that fell off and hit the sidewalk. And no one was hurt because no one was downtown. Our downtown was dying. And honestly, we were grasping for straws to save it. I'm proud of, I'm proud of Main Street. I am. And I'm proud of the men and women who've worked so hard for it. I say that to remind you that it's, times have changed. We don't have banks failing now, we have banks coming in. There was a time when I could walk from the print shop to the post office and not pass a building that was occupied by a tenant. Now, we're almost full downtown. So, please understand that the times have changed. Things are much better downtown. And as we study the budget, we study what is possible for our downtown area, things are better. And so, to ask for a huge commitment of money and time and resources, I think it's something that's going to have to be part of our budget process. I don't think you're going to get an answer tonight, yes or no. I may be wrong. These folks have outvoted me before. But the truth is, we have a budget coming up and we have some challenges with that budget. And I love the program. I do. But we have a different set of challenges now. Okay? Delane, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Well, I think I've had a year now on this board, which I got on this board before I even knew it would be here, because I really have a passion for downtown and I do think it's the heartbeat of your city. So, as I've observed, we've had a lot of great board meetings, but we haven't had the ability to take any action. So, that was the first thing I noticed that, you know, we don't have a budget and we don't have an executive director or even an administrator that can take that idea and make it happen. So, I started, you know, out with my plan to figure out how we can change that because we're doing, our downtown is very vibrant, I think, but I do think it really requires attention, constant attention, constant monitoring of what the needs are of our downtown merchants. And that does change. And just coming up with this one event, the Water Street Festival, has taken me since last October and I'm just working on one project. So, the job description for this person will be lengthy, but it will be vital and I think it's an investment and the investment we're already making in our downtown. Arcadia Live has brought new blood, new life to downtown on the weekends and that's just been wonderful to witness. But I just think this manager, this position, which I've talked to three or four in different cities, really are critical. I think that's the reason it is a requirement for the Texas Main Street program, that you don't just have the board trying to do something with the city staff. You need that full-time manager to monitor it. And of course, that will be the next challenge, to find the right person for that job. But I think we can do that and I think it'll be money well spent. So, I suppose what I'd like to do, would y'all, do you have any questions before...
Do you have any questions for Delane?
Of anybody?
Well, I have a couple of statements I'll make, but I'll let you finish.
Well, I was going to make a motion, so I'll...
Okay, you want to wait?
I'll wait.
I just want to say that for at least, I've lived here for 30 years and for at least 30 years, we've had somebody in a position with the city that was paid by the city to manage our downtown area. So, I want, I want to be sensitive to that. But I also, a big burr in my saddle, so to speak, has always been the TERS. And it was from a personal perspective in that, you know, I'm 40 blocks away from downtown and yet I was lumped into the downtown district and my property taxes therefore benefited the TERS, where I didn't feel like our business would benefit from any TERS money. Well, now, now you're going to reduce the scope of downtown to 16 blocks instead of 42 blocks or whatever it is. But one of my, one of my big issues was that I wanted the TERS money to benefit everybody in the TERS zone. And I can't see of a better use for that money than to spend it for a Main Street manager that oversees the entire downtown district and all the businesses within that district. I would much rather see a portion of the TERS money go there than to one individual business, which is what I was led to believe that would happen when I first joined council. So, I do believe in a thriving downtown. I do believe it's the heart of our city and I would just like to advocate for a portion of the TERS money to fund that manager.
I'm going to jump on your tailcoats, ma'am, with that. But I'm also going to go back to what Mr. Howard said with his remarks earlier. How to fund and budget, that's the biggest question right now. We haven't even started budgets yet. Well, Julie has, but we have not started with her yet. We love downtown, there's some great things. Marty Grau. You know, it's, there's a lot of fun things to do, but we also have to look from a budget standpoint. Now, I know we had a position, we have, you know, a manager. That position's since been dissolved. She's gone, it's kind of gone away. We need to do something. I agree with the TERS funds. There's got to be some kind of grant. There's one in here I was reading about, but it's more for infrastructure instead of personnel. But we should look for some grants and some funding to help. I am all for, I don't care if you live in Kerr County or not, we're talking Kerrville. You need to live in Kerrville, not Kerr County, if you're going to be a manager for this. I think one of our managers lived in Bullverde, drove in every day. Dr. Rector, I believe you told me that the other day. I don't go to Bullverde. I'm not going to go there and spend my money.
The way to get there.
Is there a way to get there? Horseback? You know, I'm a fond believer that, I live here, I'm going to spend my money here and I want my tax money to go here back to us. And I think that if you're going to be a city employer, you're going to be a downtown manager, a Main Street manager, you need to live in the city. You don't need, forget the county, live in the city. But it's, we just got to focus and figure out a way to get this done responsibly. And right now, I cannot do that without, before we start our budget meetings and we can sit down with...
Well, that's kind of the timeliness of this now, is we kind of missed the gate last year. You know, I came on board in May and it was already a little too late to even know what to recommend. So, now that I've had a year to look and talk with the board and get advice, this is why we're doing it now.
Well, I'm glad you are. I'm glad y'all are. But we need to be responsible when we do it and we need to look at it budgetarily.
Right. And I still have questions myself, which I've asked of staff because this is not my area of expertise. And if we know we just, we know we have the idea and want to do it now, help us to figure out how we do it. And I know there's, maybe Kent, you might have some more comments or questions before we...
He does.
He does.
Good.
I've asked him.
So, I think the general fund budget has no room at this time. And it was brought up earlier, I mean, there are other funding mechanisms. But the cap we have on increase in our property tax rates set by the state, replacing that we've had the succeeding, we can raise our property taxes. There's putting a lot of pinch on the budget overall. I'm not at all against the idea, I think, you know, it could serve great purpose, but we really, really the budget part of it is, is like, well, where, where is the money going to come from? And is it going to be TERs or EIC or hot money or whatever? But, so we got to, we got to stop and think about, you know, where, where that might come from, so. That's all. Thank you.
Delane?
Well, if we could wrap it up with just summarizing the fact that we, we recognize we would like to have this person that's working for us in this capacity. If we could recognize we agree on that level at least, maybe we can ask the staff to work with us on, you know, making this happen, having a person. And, and I can't say if, you know, I've gotten some feedback from Mike Hayes and from Julie both about TERs money. And I, I honestly, it's kind of a new question about how we can use this money and making it fair for all the TERs as well. So, I have to, you know, leave that up to you to tell me how we guide, how we go along getting this accomplished. But I just want to make sure we have a consensus, we want, we want to try, we want to try to make this happen.
Steph, I think what you're hearing is consensus that we want to investigate funding opportunity, funding possibilities in like upcoming budget to employ a Main Street, a full-time Main Street manager. I think you're hearing consensus that we want to explore options other than property taxes to fund it.
I, I.
I think, oh, excuse me.
No, I'm sorry.
I think the TERs board is the one that determines how TERs money is spent and not the city council. So, we would have to make a request to that board. That kind of sum up?
Yeah, I just, you know, recommend the staff help us, you know, go through the process of doing that.
Does that feel like a consensus with everybody?
Do we need to make a motion for a vote or?
Okay. I think while we've got this consensus and we can work on it on the upcoming budget meeting.
Yes, sir.
I, I was a little reluctant to advocate too fiercely for it since it was something that I was instrumental in, in starting so long ago. So, thank you for your advocacy.
Well, I think you, and thank you all for being here tonight, that, from the board and for your input. Diane, and, oh, Diane, I don't blame her, I would have left too, but thank you for being here and just showing up and being a face in the audience.
Thank you.
Anytime you want to speak.
This conversation isn't over, it's just starting again. Thank you for being here. The next item is 6F, Tyvee Mountain Cemetery. I think I'll start that one if it's okay. Recently, a descendant of Annie Doyle just came to visit Kerrville and wanted to visit several sites. Annie Doyle started what became known as the Doyle School. She was a black educator who came here with her husband, her husband had tuberculosis. He didn't live very long, but she stayed here the rest of her life and ran a school. That descendant wanted to see two things, she wanted to see the Doyle School and the Tyvee Mountain Cemetery. Let's not be confused. Captain Tyvee is buried at the very top of Tyvee Mountain. But there's a cemetery at the intersection of Cypress Creek Road and Loop 1604?
No, 534.
534, thank you, I was in San Antonio for a second. Past my bedtime. At 534. That's a historically black cemetery. And she's, and we went out there and, and the weeds were as high as my chest and I'm not a tall man, so that's not as high on you. And she goes, who takes care of this? Who owns this? And I didn't tell her I was mayor. I rarely tell people I'm mayor, I said, I'll find out. So, I did some research on the Tyvee Mountain Cemetery, pulling up some old newspaper articles. And my old friend Dane Toon, who was the finance director back when I was involved in city government before, is quoted in the newspaper article saying, "Turns out, we own Tyvee Mountain Cemetery, the city of Kerrville owns it." Well, that put me in a quandary, because I, I knew we needed to do better by those people who are buried there. We needed to honor their memory. And we needed to remember their contributions to our community and we need to honor their descendants. So, I brought it to Dalton Rice, Mr., the city manager, and said, what can we do? Well, the Parks Department looked at it and, and, and they're going to cut down some of the weeds. But, in the meantime, I read an article about old historic cemeteries. And they don't look like, in this article, they didn't look like manicured lawns and they didn't look like they had, they didn't, they looked like, like a park, like a wild, a wilderness space with trees and, and paths. And that's important at this particular cemetery because many of the graves are no longer marked. They're just indentions in the earth. No tombstones. There's no way to know who was buried exactly where. And what I would like to ask tonight is that we form a committee made up of the descendants of those who are buried in that cemetery. Come up with a plan to turn that space, which is owned by the city, into a worthy memorial of those who are buried there. Mr. Hayes, the city attorney, said one of his nightmares is to find out that the city owns a cemetery. Turns out, we do own a cemetery. And so, what I would like to ask the council, at least by consensus, is permission to begin form, forming a committee from descendants of those who are buried there. Come up with a plan. Now, by chance, I ran into Clifton Pfeiffer today, here at City Hall. And I believe he told me both he has a grandmother buried there and a great-grandfather buried there. And so, I said, I told him about the idea and I said, what do you think? He said, that's a good idea. I said, would you be on the committee? He would. So, we've got at least one person willing to serve. I, I, we are in a unique situation in that we own a cemetery. But we also are in a unique situation to do right by those families who have loved ones buried there. And so, if we have consensus, I will work with Clifton Pfeiffer to identify descendants of the families buried there and come back, try to come back with a plan. Or, for doing that. Now, we'll also need staff assistance to tell us what's possible and what's not possible. But I don't anticipate this being a extremely expensive project. But I do think it'll be a meaningful one for, for our community and for families that are buried there. I do, Rosa Lavender, who was a, was my government teacher at Tyvee, in 1976 led a group of students out there and they documented the cemetery. And that was in nineteen, so it was 1976, a long time ago. And that's the, some of the best documentation we really have on that cemetery. So, I think with a committee and that documentation and other ideas on how we can make that a meaningful space, I, I would like, I would like consensus to go ahead and start on that. Please, go ahead.
You think, Clifton knows a lot, but if we could find out if there's any veterans in there as well.
There are.
Because I'm a member of an organization here in town with a young lady back here sitting by Mr. Amstoy, I won't name her name. But together with Hill Country Veterans, wanted to work at the Guadalupe Cemetery and was kind of told, no thanks. But I think with our last board meeting that we just had last week, we talked about it some more. And I think the board would want to help out and beautify, mow, whatever we could do. I, I know that we would be willing to do that. Mostly since we can honor our veterans that are buried there as well. And my last question, just so, I am absolutely, this is kind of the northwest corner of 534, the low one. Okay.
Correct. I took the city manager out there and we almost, almost killed him by backing into oncoming traffic, so. If you visit the site, be careful. Fortunately, we have, I have a vehicle that stopped us before we got.
I have one geographical question, okay? The cemetery that's on the side of 534? The northern side of Dog Creek or?
Cypress Creek.
Cypress Creek.
That's not the same one you're talking about?
You can see it at the intersection of Cypress and 534, on the way past 534. Tyvee Mountain is a family cemetery at the top, it's separate.
Right, okay. I, I still haven't been to any of them, I'm waiting for my.
If you want to drive with a, I'm with a dangerous driver, I'll take you out there. So, is that okay if we go ahead and start this? Y'all, y'all good with that?
Absolutely, that's our.
We have consensus to begin, thank you. While I spent more time jabbering than I should, I apologize.
I did too.
Financial report, Ms. Behrens, thank you for being here.
I would say good evening, I think everyone's probably ready for dinner at this point, so I'll be brief. This is just your monthly, not your quarterly report, so it'll be a little bit shorter than the one last month. So, we'll hop into general fund first, so property tax, 95% collected. About, I'll show you some historical information on that in a minute. Sales tax still tracking worse than where we expected it to be. And again, we'll have some slides coming up on that too. Franchise a little bit behind, but that's primarily due to a K-Pub revenue shortfall, so we're thinking there could be some timing issues there, I've been working with Amy on that, so we expect that to level out. Overall expenses, quite a bit better than budget right now, we haven't really dipped into contingency much, so that's in that other expenses line item there. We do expect to spend all street maintenance dollars this year. So, each year, you know, we have some carryover, but paving is on track. And so, our contracts that we did toward the end of last year prepared us for this year, so expect to spend all those dollars. Again, looking at property tax collections, you can see collections to budget there in the first graph. So, looking at a five-year history, 95% is about on track for where we are at this point. And then, again, the rate, the chart on the bottom is your revenue per, through April of each year and then also compared to your property tax rate each year, which is the orange line there, just showing you. Really, as the rate goes down, we are generating more revenue, but that is, you know, indicative of growth and then also either in rooftops or in value, one or the other. Sales tax, remember we budgeted 3% less than we did last year, just because of the trend and what we were seeing. We are tracking lower than we expected, we do expect to probably have a shortfall in sales tax revenue, but we're tracking that pretty close. Interesting thing is regardless of dollars, the trend lines really don't change. So, when you look at month over month and you're trying to do estimates for budget, it really does give you a pretty good indication if you can kind of track what happens each month. And then remember, we look at 12-month rolling averages and not a month over month, because there's a lot of anomalies that can happen and you see some big jumps there, whether we had an audit payment or someone paid early or, or someone paid late, things like that. So, you can see on the right, so what our 25 is compared to 24, so it's really ups and downs. November's up, December's up, and then again, we're, we were down in May, which that's not included on the graph. So, we're watching that really closely and picking out any big things that might be anomalies so we can subtract those when we're doing projections. What I like about this graph, and I don't know if everyone finds it as interesting as I do, but it's really important to remember, we use a five-year average of expenses by category when we're trying to decide where we should be for budget at any given time. And so, it helps us a lot when we're doing forecasting to track and know kind of where we are with expenses when we're doing year-end estimates and those kind of things on where we project we're going to end the year. So, I always like to see these aligned pretty well. So, if our budgeted percentage is about equal to where we estimated it to be, then that means our estimates are working. Whether, you know, we're right on or a little bit off, it's, it gets you pretty close even though it is still an estimate. So, these, these are helpful when I'm looking at projections. Oops, back up. So, water fund and luckily have been able to tell some good news stories here over the past few months. This time last year, I went back and looked at presentation and the message was we're going to miss water sales by 400 and something thousand through April. We were projecting a million dollar shortfall in water sales. And so, as we went through modeling process, through the budget and everything last year, we talked a lot about changing up the water model and really have a lot less dependency now on irrigation for budgetary purposes as we had in the past. And so, that's good. We weren't really sure what that overage, I guess you would call it, would be based on the reduction of irrigation. So, we're really starting to see that stick out. And so, we can start looking at that a little bit different as we go into budget this year and projecting what that reduction in irrigation will do to our revenue. Overall expenses, better than budget right now. Remember, we haven't really dipped into contingency, so when you look at other expenses, we have contingency remaining in there. And then the transfer out, and I like to point this out because it is higher than fiscal year '24, but remember, we had a substantially higher budget for sustainability, whether to the facility fund or to asset replacement. A little bit increase in debt service, but primarily the increase there was due to the sustainability built into the budget. These are just the same graphs that we looked at on the general fund and this is just something we really use when we're doing projections. And so, I thought I would share those just as budget expenditures to date compared to estimated where we should be from the budget. Development services, we've talked about this a lot, probably in the last three, four years. It's super volatile and so, right now, we're trending better than budget on revenues, but there's a lot of things happening and a lot of times, something will happen in one year, but you won't see the result until the next year. And so, it's really hard to project that into budget revenues. But I'll flip to the next slide just so you can see, and, and this again is through April collections year over year. So, you can really see the difference one year to the next based on what projects are happening. So, it is important to remember, development services is part of the general fund for financial reporting purposes. And so, when we budget and there's a variance, then you'll see that transfer out from both the general fund and the water fund, just kind of based on percentage of how the development services supports each of those funds.
Could I ask you a question real quick?
Absolutely.
On the slide, slide before this one, on development services, out of the 756,000 permits and fees, was there one entity that was the lion's share of that?
I would probably have to dig into that more, you know, we had a lot of things happen last year. So, I don't know, Drew, can you speak to that specifically or I can get back to you on that?
It's just an estimate.
Well, we track, Trina tracks, Trina Sanchez tracks like number of permits issued and those kind of things when we're looking at revenue. And so, by category and outsourcing and anything that we have to do, whether it's revenue and expense related to number of permits. And so, that's not difficult for us to get. If you're meaning like if there was one specific subdivision or area, things like that.
I was wondering, yeah.
Then we could, we could sure get that.
Okay.
But there's been a lot happening with even commercial development around, so.
Not all residential.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to speak to that without looking into it a little bit more. But good question, because it can, and that's to the point of one thing, something happens this year could greatly affect what happens next year because we haven't received the revenue for it yet, if it's a major project. But we, staff might be doing the work on it now, you know, just, there's a lot of factors there.
Thank you.
Occupancy tax, still trailing behind year-to-date estimate. I like to kind of lay this next to sales tax and, and see what's happening because you're looking at kind of expendable income, I would use, I would say. You know, hopefully, the rains that have come will make the river look a little bit better for the summer and, and that'll bring us a little bit more tourism. I think that's hurt us a little bit, in my opinion, in the last couple of years, just because of the drought. But river's looking better and so, we're hoping that that will turn around some in the, in the, in the summer. Expenses are aligned with budget, not a lot of surprises there in this fund, it's pretty clear on expenses. But do remember that we haven't made the transfer from fund balance over to HHHC project, which we fully expect will happen this year. Again, I think, yeah, we just gave you a historical look here. I always like to look at it through the same period, just to see kind of how it trends. Because, again, trend lines are pretty consistent, dollars aren't always, but, but trends are. So, a couple of things on budget process to date. We've completed all, but I think three or four of our internal departmental budget meetings with our budget committee. That's been very helpful, each department has had to present their budget, whether it be their operational budget, new asks, anything like that. So, they've had to present those to the budget committee and that's been pretty helpful and I think educational for people who get to sit on that committee. Departments are continuing to look for savings, I will say everyone has been very efficient in turning in budgets and, and aligning in what we've asked them to do. And then we're working through asset replacement needs, funding sources and those kind of things. Because as we know, prices of everything, you know, police, police cars, ambulances, they're double, you know, what they were three years ago. So, really looking at some, maybe trying to get creative on some funding sources for that. Updating water and waste water model and then we have CIP meetings coming up in the next month. So, did want to clarify, there is one typo on here. So, June 17th and July 17th are dates for budget workshops. I'm not sure how that got in there, but the calendar that we sent out to you is correct and the calendar that we talked about. And I do have copies of those out front also for any citizens who might want to know when those meetings are. We'll have that follow-up of budget. Um, we'll have that follow-up, uh, budget workshop on August sixth. I thought that was pretty helpful last year, just as we got property tax in and were able to get a little bit closer on what we thought. Um, revenue was gonna be there and, and rate possibilities, so that'll be on August sixth, and then we'll present the budget to you guys on the twelfth, and proceed from there. So happy to answer any questions, uh, that you might have.
Any question from Ms. Behrens? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Julie.
We're good?
There's two different items, this is liaison, this is-
Well, we have to appoint you to replace Jeff.
Yeah, but that's, this is agenda-
That's fine, I understand.
Okay, whatever, okay.
Uh, we have board appointments. Uh, Mr. McKinney and I visited about the EIC appointment, and we have two recommendations.
So actually, Celeste Hammond has applied to, to, uh, serve another term.
Sorry.
And so-
Three recommendations.
We recommend, we recommend that. We had, uh, three other great applications, only two more spots, uh, to fill, and, uh, so at this point, we are recommending Darby Camel and Danny Foster as, uh, those two replacements for, and then-
And Celeste Hammond.
Yes, Celeste Hammond to be reappointed and, and appoint these two new members.
Second.
Motion is second.
Any discussion? All, yes, ma'am?
Darby Camel. C-A-M-P-B-E-L-L. Denny Foster.
And Celeste.
Celeste.
Hammond.
Celeste Hammond.
We only had three vacancies.
Correct.
Okay.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. That's unanimously. Also, we have, uh, council liaison appointments, and I think I have heard who does not want to be on what. And, uh, here's what I would make as our recommended, uh, council liaison, and I'll make this as a motion, that the airport board continue to be our council liaison, be council member McKinney. Downtown advisory committee continues to be Councilman Seigerman. Our EIC, uh, liaison would be Councilman McKinney. I don't think we have ever had a liaison on P and Z.
I'll do it.
Um, you'll do it?
I'll do it.
All right.
I was on P and Z before, so I can, I can liaise.
So Councilman Harris will be our liaison on P and Z. Uh, Playhouse Two Thousand, our liaison would be Councilman Harris. I would remain on, uh, the Economic Development Corporation, the Public Facility Corporation, uh, Tax Increment, Investment Zone Number One, and also K-Pub. That's what I would recommend as a motion.
It was TERS, so aren't you?
Right.
I'm, I'm on TERS.
Is there a board that you would like for me to?
Like to do TERS?
I'll do TERS.
Thank goodness.
That's right up your alley, Brenda.
All right. So to repeat, for Shelley especially.
You're K-E-D-C, right? Okay.
EDC. And K-Pub and-
And mayor.
And mayor. Everything clear? We good?
Yes, sir.
That would be a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Unanimously. Thank you for being willing to serve in those new spots. Any, uh, items for future agendas?
I've mentioned to the city manager that I would like to, for development agreements that have not actually taken place yet, to start talking about, uh, water conservation when it comes to the plant, the projects, commercial or residential, and that's a process.
I'm happy to support that for future. Jeff, you have anything?
I do, yes, sir. City manager Rice and I discussed a little bit, he's already dug into this a little bit, but I would like to, uh, put on a future agenda item to have the city of Kerrville named as a Purple Heart City. With our veteran population that we have here, um, it is not a very daunting process, it doesn't look like, um, and we can get the designation, Purple Heart City. So I would like that for a future agenda.
Happy, happy to support that as well.[1759.83]